All right, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the August 31st, 2020 Meeting of the Transportation Policy and Planning Board. I see everyone, all board members on the participants list. I will call the meeting to order. We do appear to have a quorum. Ann, will you please call the roll?
Do you hear me? We can hear you, Tom.
Sorry, I thought I unmuted myself, but I guess I didn't. Grant Foster.
President.
Keith Furman.
Present.
Rebecca Campbell.
Here.
Eric Sunquist.
I am here, but my wife has cut herself and I'm going to have to go to urgent care in about an hour. So if I disappear, that will be the reason.
Robert Burke.
Present.
Chris McHale.
Here.
Tom Olson. I know you're here, you told me to call roll. Walt Azar, Deanna Santana.
Here.
Margaret Bergamini.
Here.
Badri Lankhala.
Here.
Thanks. Tom appears to be frozen.
Yeah, I see it, actually, a few people on, that appear to be frozen on my end. Okay, it looks like we just lost Tom. Is there someone else I can promote to? Who is the, Sarah Weiss, or a?
I'm the vice chair of this one, I think, yeah. TPBB Brad. Yeah. This is Alder Foster.
All right, Alder Foster, you've been promoted to co-host, so.
So, sorry, did we finish the roll call?
Yes. And I'm about to email you the registrants list, if you'd like.
Sure. Is there any public comments for items not on the agenda?
Bob Schaefer.
All right. Let me go ahead and hear from Mr. Schaefer then.
You're unmuted, Bob, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to take the time to remind you or to bring your attention that I sent you a couple of things regarding to transit X and the updated to that. And the current information provides a lot more information than the previous one did and answered a number of questions about the involvement of local people, local control, and union involvement, some of the things that the mayor was concerned about in the past. It also gave more detail that filled in some of the blanks or some of the assumptions that were done in the previous evaluation of it. So I strongly recommend that it's given some consideration and that it would be also advantageous to get on the list in terms of places to implement it. And along with that, my understanding would come along some possible opportunities for employment in terms of fabrication and assembly. So I think that's a benefit to the city of Madison and it would definitely be an improvement over the bus rapid transit that's currently looked at.
I think I figured. Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Yeah, thanks. Any questions for the registrant? All right, thank you. Moving on to disclosures and recusals, are there any to be made by members of the body? Seeing none, that would bring us to item three, amending the Yahara Hills Neighborhood Development Plan to remove the recommended northerly extension of Omeida Drive.
Did we approve the minutes from the last meeting? It doesn't have a number.
Yeah, thank you. So, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from August 3rd?
This is Robert, so moved.
It's been moved by Robert. Alder, can you hand up, is that a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? And seeing none, is there any opposition to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, that passes. Bring us back to item three, and Alder Tierney, I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, this is a proposal I'm excited about for our city and for my district especially. HSA, back in 2018, had been looking at a parcel in my district on Bogus Road, but for various reasons, that property wouldn't suit their needs. So, I guess it was about two months ago, they contacted me to let me know that they had been in contact with GE Medical and had the ability to build 428,000 square feet of manufacturing buildings, three buildings on a parcel that is right by GE Medical, fronting Emrite Drive. The proposal they have when they build these, or finish building these structures would probably create about 200 manufacturing jobs, some office jobs, add about $90,000, I believe the figure was, to our tax base annually. The one hiccup in the plan right now is that under the Yahara Hills Neighborhood Development Plan, there's a requirement that would be created to extend Omeida Drive north to a point where one day it could possibly be linked up with a roadway that would go east to west through a parcel land currently owned by the Blattermans. Right now, there aren't any development plans in place for that Blatterman property, so the extension of Omeida Drive at this point would essentially create a road to nowhere at great expense for the parties involved. HSA had proposed putting a trigger into place where they could forego having to do that extension until such time that the properties, the Blatterman properties and others, that would, there would actually be plans put forward to move ahead and have a development that would necessitate an extension of Omeida Drive. But, city staff came back and said, well, you know, the best, the best thing to do at this time would just to be to pursue an amendment to the Neighborhood Development Plan that would not require the extension to go forward at this time. So, basically, what is before you is, it's not a vacating, or it's not saying that the extension of Omeida Drive north would never occur, it's just resequencing events so that in the future, whenever there is a development proposal for the Blatterman property, that's when the extension would be in place. And by doing so, it would, it would enable HSA to go forward with their development on Emrite Drive at the present time, and then at a future date, when additional development occurs and there are plans submitted for other properties that would benefit from the extension of Omeida Drive then, that could go forward. And I know Phil Jennings from HSA is on this meeting as well, and in the event you have like technical questions about what HSA does or what they're proposing.
Thank you, Alder Tierney, we do have registrants on this item. Also, Chris Pedakowski, I saw you had your hand up, looks like it's down now, is, was anyone from staff going to give any presentation on this item, or is it just what we heard from Alder Tierney?
I just had my hand up because Brian was having, Brian Grady was having trouble getting in, but he's in now, so I think he's going to take the lead for staff.
Great, Brian, are you with us?
Yep, yeah, thank you, appreciate that. So, yeah, Brian Grady with the planning division. And, so, yeah, just overall, we provided a staff report and some maps to facilitate review of this request. Overall, the plan was adopted for the Yahara Hills Neighborhood Plan back in 2017, and so, as Alder Tierney described there, the main thing is the developer does not feel the street is warranted, or at least at this time, objecting to the cost of that street. The only downside is we don't have a good, this isn't have a good mechanism for deferring costs of infrastructure along with the project. The primary requirement here is we have a plan in place that shows the street being extended. When you do a development, you're required to do the improvements called for in city plans, policies, and so here, we don't have a good way of deferring cost of the construction of the road. And so it just seemed like, rather than, rather than, you know, come up with some new way of deferring construction, we would just bring it to the boards, commissions, committees, and the common council to see if the, what the, how the city values that street extension, basically. And so, overall, we did, kind of a normal procedure is, again, as development occurs, infrastructure is built. We, when we did the plan, we saw this, this future extension as serving possibly additional development on the GE property, like as being proposed. There's a development of property across, across Omeida Drive that's proposed for development industrial, and then again, this would connect up with that, that Blatterman property and a street through there. So our main thought was that the street in this area would provide access to development areas, and then also just provide general circulation in this area. I guess with that, I'll kind of maybe pause there and see other questions folks might have.
Great, I think what I'd like to do is just take public comment first, and then we can come back with questions for staff. Ann, would you like to let us know who are our speakers?
Sure. It is Carrie, Carrie McAllen, opposed and wanting to speak.
Hello, good evening, everybody. Yes, I'm one of the property owners and of the property across the street from GE Medical. And presently, we have several plans laid out for development of that, that parcel, which consists of approximately 34 acres to include the residents that is there. And some of our plans do include access from the presently public 500 feet of Omeida Drive. So, when we purchased that parcel of land in 2007, it was our understanding and intent that we would develop that land with that public access to our, to our property. So, we oppose this because the way we understand the change to the neighborhood plan is that the entire Omeida Drive would be vacated, and then we would no longer have that public right-of-way and access to our property and would, would reduce how we use it, limit, limit its viability and increase our costs to our property. So, I don't know if, I do have some other folks on the call that are registered, I think, to, to speak, but I would think that I, I would like the city to take more time to study how, how this decision to vacate Omeida Drive will impact development in the area. And then also, I would like to be more involved in, in that process. I only found out about this very recently and haven't had much time to think about it and react to it, but anyway, but I guess that's why we're here, to discuss it. So, so like I said, this, presently, there is no access to my, I have a parcel that presently has no access to it. There is an apron that goes into my parcel of land from Omeida Drive, but if that becomes a private, private road, I will, I won't have access to my property from a private road.
Thank you, Carrie. Are there any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you. Next registrant, Ann?
Phil Jennings from HSA Commercial Real Estate would like to speak in support.
Good afternoon. I would like to speak in support of this and clarify a couple things. One, the Alder Tierney made an opening comment, and just one correction to that, the projected tax revenue, property tax revenue associated with the proposed development is 700, roughly $700,000, not $90,000, so just one correction there. And then, secondly, we are not proposing that Omeida Drive be vacated. We believe that Omeida Drive is an essential part of, of this development, and not only to serve the roughly 420,000 square feet of development that, that HSA is proposing, but also to continue to serve GE and the employees that, that visit that site every day for their normal responsibilities. The issue is really a question of sequencing and timing, so that at some point in the future, when development activity occurs, probably as a result of the increased development activity on the GE site, as we're discussing tonight, that at that point, when the final engineering is formulated for both the east-west road, for Mr., for Sir, Mr. Blatterman's property off of Old Meyer Road, which would then connect to an extension of Omeida Road from south to north, when, when that development plan is figured out, then, then we think that's when these improvements should be made. The unique advantage of this particular development is that in addition to bringing a substantial number of construction jobs, it'll also bring a substantial number of, you know, near-term employment opportunities. So, the, the road structure is adequate to serve this development, and to the extent in the future, when the road structure has to change to meet a development that hasn't even been conceptualized, never mind proposed, then at that point, these extensions should be made. And in fact, we proposed, as Alder Tierney made a comment, we, we've created a development agreement with the city that had a specific triggering mechanism for when these improvements would be made, which would tie to a development proposal by either McAllen or Mr. Blatterman. Neither of those parties have a development plan on the drawing boards, and so it just doesn't simply seem warranted to incur this expense, which might actually be aligned incorrectly based on, on how future development plans would unfold. So, we are not trying to landlock anything, we are trying to do ambitious development that would bring industrial development inside the city and provide employment opportunities, net new jobs. And what's particularly unique about this development and this development site is that it is in close proximity to the established public transportation infrastructure. So very often, this sort of development finds itself outside of the city of Madison, and so the employees who are seeking employment at these opportunities don't have access to public transportation as a way of getting to and from work. This is an exception to that general practice, and we think it's an important exception. I'd be happy to address any questions that any members of the committee might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the registrant? Seeing none, thank you.
Jeff Ruda-Bush, Representative McAllen Properties, would like to speak in opposition.
Can you hear me?
Maybe just speak up a little bit more, or get a little closer.
How about no?
That's a little better, thank you.
Okay, yeah, no, I think Carrie articulated the concern that, that we have is, with the, out of the 120 acres of McAllen Property Zones over there, this northern portion with the remaining 30 is, is predicated on having access off of Omeida Drive. All the pre-planning we've done, all the buildings that we have, you know, pre slated in there, all use that as a, as an access point, so my opposition is solely based on continuing for these properties to have access off of Omeida Drive.
Thank you. Any questions for the registrant?
Bill, sorry. Bill and Chris Blatterman would like to speak in opposition.
Bill and Chris, you may have a prompt on your screen asking to be unmuted, there you go.
All right, this is Chris Blatterman, and I'm speaking on behalf of Bill and myself, and we oppose the vacating of Omeida Drive, or, as you've stated earlier, removing the northernly extension of Omeida Drive from the Yahara Hills Development Plan. That was adopted in 2017, and the reason for that is there really won't be much of an access to in and out of the 95 acres that Bill currently owns. And hopefully that, at some point in the near future, we will be able to develop that property, and only having the one access point that you have on your plan seems to us to be lacking in being able to sustain the traffic that will be made.
Thank you. Any questions for the registrant? Seeing none, thank you. Next registrant?
I just want to check Brian Grady's register, I think that was just a way of perhaps trying to get on the call. Is that right?
That is correct, yep, just hoping to get in, so disregard that, thank you.
Next is Lucas Rowe from McAllen Properties, doesn't want to speak, but is available for questions in opposition.
Any questions for Lucas? Okay, seeing none, questions for staff? Alder Campbell, go ahead.
Brian, could you go into a little bit more detail about when you said there's no mechanism for a deferred payment? And that being the reason why the plan has to be amended if they're not going to build their portion of the road at this time? And is there any other way for, so explain what deferred payment means, but I'm just think, just thinking logically, if and when that road does get built, they will still have to pay for their portion of it, right? And just confirming that, and just help us understand the details.
Sure, so, so in the, in the city's subdivision regulations, which are basically regulations for, for development, it states that whenever a site is posed for development, you, a developer must build all the infrastructure that's in adopted plans and policies, and so here, because the Yahara Hills NDP Neighborhood Plan shows Omeida Drive being extended, they would need to then extend the street for the subdivision regulations along the limits of their project, and the staff report enumerates all those development requirements that are, again, very typical of development projects. And so as the developer was inquiring about whether the, the road extension could be deferred, we, city staff met and, and basically came to a conclusion that we don't have a way of doing that. Quite honestly, if we did try to create some way of doing that, it would be problematic because what happens is if you don't require things along with a project, and the project goes in, then you really lose a lot of the leverage in terms of actually having them pay for the project. And so, as, as kind of a general, as I, we kind of call it standard operating procedure, development's required to put the infrastructure in. What can happen is that if you defer it, the development goes in, the developer is really out of, of the situation, they're, they're kind of out of the, out of the, they're not involved anymore, you know, this would be owned by them maybe, maybe a different entity, and so you come back five, 10, 15 years later, and you say, okay, it's time to, to pay your share, there really is not a guarantee that, that, that that share will get paid. And so quite honestly, in that situation, what we think would happen is the city would say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna do this project, and, and the proper would say, we have no money to pay for this, to pay for the road project, we have no money, can't do it, I'm sorry, city, this is, this is not the highest priority, we can't afford to pay it. And so, that's why, again, standard operating procedure is to have things built, infrastructure built, along with development incrementally, that's how roads are typically built, that's how utilities are typically installed, and then they're turned over to the city, and so there just isn't, the developer posed, doing a development, developer's agreement, and just, it's not something that our city attorney's office would be comfortable entering into, and it's just not a good, good, good way of handling things in terms of how the city sees, sees infrastructure being installed. And so, as long as the plan shows that extension, they would be required to build that street. And so our, our way of basically bringing this question to, to the forefront would be to pose a plan amendment, which is why we, Alder Tierney sponsoring this, and why we drafted the materials.
Other questions for staff? Chris, go ahead.
Thanks. Could you, Brian, could you just explain, maybe you said it and I missed it, but what are, so this, it sounds like this is, this is going to, is basically, what are the chances, then, that the developer would, would chip into the extension if development happened later? And, I mean, it sounds like what you're saying is that we're sort of abandoning the idea of this extension happening, am I wrong there?
I think, I think we're basically just bringing this question to, to TPBB, then Plan Commission, Common Council, to really have the city weigh in on how they value this planned street extension. Our thought was, if the committee of these bodies value it and want to keep it in the plan, then that's the answer, it would stay in the plan, and any, whether it's this project or a future developer looking at the site, we need to then, would then know that the city values the street extension, we need to build the road. If the street is not valued, again, we don't, we don't have a good way to defer it, and we don't want to defer it, quite honestly. If, if the street isn't, if the planned street extension's not valued, then the best way, the, the kind of the appeal mechanism for this case is to, again, remove it from the plan, and then we would just remove it, and it would not, it would not get built, so.
Okay, thanks. And then, also, since the, it looks like the whole, even the existing portion is, it would be no longer on the plan based on the amendment that's in there, wouldn't, wouldn't keeping that existing portion in there do something to ensure that it stays public? Or how, what, what about that consideration?
Sure, so, our, our thought then is, and so this, as staff, we have to look at, you know, the different scenarios that can play out, and as planners, that's what we do here. And so, we mentioned in the staff report that if the city decides that they don't value the street extension, if it's not, doesn't rise in importance, then we think that that kind of changes things out here, and we would recommend us, as staff at least, that, that existing 550-foot-long segment of the drive right-of-way be vacated, because really in that situation, we would have a 550-foot-long right-of-way that is serving as a driveway, is extension of existing or, or planned driveways, and the city would be maintaining would be maintaining that. So a street, it's no longer a street that provides access to more users, provides circulation, access to development. We would recommend just vacating that. There would be a separate process that would not be handled through this process now, it's not the question before everyone here, but we would recommend vacating that so that we're not maintaining that in the long term. Technically, really, we see that as just being used as a driveway. So that would be a separate process. But I think it could be, an outcome that the city could pursue if, again, if the BCCs decide, the city decides not to support the road, then staff suggests vacating that road at some point in the future through a separate process.
Robert, go ahead.
Thank you. There's a lot of moving parts here, but let me, so let me just kind of talk out loud, and maybe this will help me get my brain around it. It sounds like, you know, some of the people are concerned about this vacation of roadways, were worried about how it will affect them currently, and it sounds like doing that doesn't change the roadways that are already there, but it could affect very much what roadways would be there in the future, based on what Brian was saying, that if this right-of-way is vacated, if we take it off of the plan, there's, we're basically saying that that roadway may never get built, and it sounds like there is a, definitely a benefit to having that roadway built in the future. Right now, building that roadway is a long roadway to nowhere, and that's the problem, is we're talking about putting an infrastructure that has no benefit really right now, I think. It's just a long, dead-end road. But my question, if I can kind of get to that, I guess, is that this road may spur further development on the Blatner property. And then eventually, it becomes this nice, you know, right-angle bend road, and now there's access from two different directions to this area. So I think, it seems to me like there is a benefit to have this road there at some point. Unfortunately, the problem is it costs money to put it in now, and it doesn't sound like there will be any use for it right now. It's really putting the infrastructure in place for two years from now, or five years from now, or 10 years from now, whenever there's future development on the other properties in the area. That's how I think I understand this, and maybe this is a quick question to Brian to just say if what I just kind of summarized, sounds like I have a true grasp of the situation, or if I'm totally misunderstanding this.
I think you're on the right track. I would say, if, so if the road doesn't happen through this project, the road is not going to happen, because the existing 550-foot-long stretch that exists, this proposed project then occupies the next 1,100 feet of this planned extension. So that planned extension, 1,100 feet of that planned extension fronts this project. If the road is not going with this project, along that 1,100 feet of frontage, then there's no way it's going to happen with the project across the street, because they're going to say, well, they didn't put a road in, why should I put the road in? And so, it doesn't happen now, it's not going to happen, which is why we brought this in front of the city here. If the road goes in, as shown in the plan, it would be a little bit different for this project. And so if the road goes in, as I mentioned in the staff report, all the utilities, most utilities that serve this project, water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, those utilities actually would go in this extended road. And so it would, the utilities would be oriented differently to the site. They might, they may or not change their frontage to that planned extension. So it would change this development, it would have a benefit. You know, the city would be plowing that street, they'd be res servicing that street in the future. So there is a benefit to this property. What the developer is saying is, you know, we're good, we can handle the driveways coming off of Omeeda and off of Femrite, quite honestly. So it would change, it would be different for this development. But then again, if this road, this project, given that, you know, this project goes back, from Femrite Drive, goes back 1,700 feet, 1,600 feet, I believe, into the site, you know, it goes over a quarter mile into the site off of Femrite Drive, if this project doesn't extend this road, then it's just not going to happen, because the people across the street are going to say, well, they didn't do it, why should I do it? And the city will not have a good response to that, basically. So it's a near-term and long-term thing.
Thank you, Brian. I have no further questions at this time.
Thank you, Tom. It looks like you might be back with us. Are you able to take the script over?
Yeah, can you hear me?
That sounds good on my end.
Okay, great. I'm so sorry, everyone, I was having some issues with Zoom, and I had to change a few settings. It seems like it's working okay now. All right, Eric Sunquist, go ahead.
So this is also for Brian. It sounds like the objections are twofold. One, from the developer, one, the alignment might change somewhat, depending on what the future development is, and two, they don't want to pay for it yet because it's not useful, it's not, they don't find it very useful right now. Regardless of what we think about those two things, do you think the alignment is, would change, would feasibly change? And two, if that is a concern, is there a way they could just pay for it now and put the money in the bank, and it gets built later? Yeah, I think you're muted.
Yeah, I'll respond to the alignment question, maybe I'll turn over to Chris, heads up to Chris for the money issue. So I would, I think I can share my screen here. I would say the, pardon my marking this up here, but I would say the alignment is pretty straightforward, I would say. And so our plan, we did not, you know, do a whole lot of creativity here, and we just showed the street going up where the driveway exists today. I think that is the best location. You've basically, and we can look at their proposal, you've got buildings back here, you've got buildings along here, and so it works well, I think, for development to front the street here. Development would probably also front the street across it. I think there's maybe still some small loan development potential on the GE site in the back. To run a road kind of through the site would start to be creating some curves, and I just don't see that as being, I don't see it being alternative alignment. The road, the driveway exists there, because it made sense to them, and I think a road would use that same alignment. And then if I just jump over to their site plan real quickly here, let me pull that up one second, bear with me. One second, I got too much stuff going on. Almost there. Here's their, here's their site plan. So yeah, you've got, I hope you're all seeing the site plan. You've got Omeeda Drive that exists, you know, for this section down, right here, again, the first 500 feet, so their site overall fits up pretty well. Buildings here, kind of that shared drive, parking, another building, another building, they have stormwater for their project. Again, to have, to think of a road going, curving off of this current Omeeda Drive right-of-way alignment, I don't think would make much sense. And then again, this just kind of continues straight up. With industrial, you want to have a little larger spaces for larger buildings, that's how we would lay it out, how we did in the neighborhood plan. So yeah, I would think, I mean, alignment overall probably makes sense. If we move it off of the current property line, then the McAllen folks that so divided the land on the other side of Omeeda would say, hey, I need access to that road. So you want to keep the road right there where both sides can access it, make use of it. Chris, thoughts on the money part?
Oh, I think the question was, could they just, could they just provide the money upfront? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. And maybe it doesn't matter as much, given the answer that the alignment is pretty well-known. They were asserting that that might not be the case, but let's just say, we wanted to, for some reason, they still thought that might change, could they put money in, you know, in lieu of the project, and then when the project gets built, the city spends it, rather than building it now, when it's allegedly not needed?
I think that'd be a little bit tricky, because, so normally, we would, when we do a developer's agreement, we have the developers build the street as they go, and before the project begins, we take a surety payment. So I can't, I guess you'd have to try to figure out what the cost would be in the year that you wanted to do it, because the, you know, the cost in 15 years, 15 years from now is different than the cost to do it now. So I'm not quite sure how that would work, as far as taking a, like a down payment and actually not building it. You know, and presumably, the developer would be paying interest on that, which they, I presume wouldn't want to do for that surety.
Okay. So maybe it's not feasible to work out for this deal, but it does seem like it raises an interesting policy question. You got the property to the east that will benefit from this, but isn't contributing to it, you know, and some other properties around that'll benefit from it. So it's kind of like putting a lot on this one development, and you get some free riders coming along, if there were a way to kind of smooth that out, and, you know, people contribute as they go along. And I don't know how, you're right, who knows what year gets built and how much money that would be, but just for what it's worth. So that's all I got. Thanks.
There is ways to do, you know, a little bit over half a street, so that they're not paying for the full improvements on the east side of the road. That's pretty typical. We would, you know, create plans that would, sometimes you, it's, you can't really always just build half a street, because you need to drive two ways on the street, you know, but initially, but there's a way to, you know, maybe to skinny that cross-section up and get as little as possible of the street built on the east side. So that's usually how we deal with that sort of issue. But that still happens with the development, that when you delay these improvements as part of the developments, there's just no good time to, you know, the best time really is when the, when the landowner's selling the land, there's that money to help pay for the improvements that need to be done. And when you, when you, when you close that deal, and then come back five to 10 years later and say, you know, here's a $5 million assessment, there's not many businesses that can, you know, in our opinion, that would be able to just accept that. And we feel like we might be portraying the wrong, you know, if we delay this improvement and assume that the street will go in, where staff is concerned that we're not portraying what will really happen.
Okay, thanks. And we don't have a motion yet, and I'm not going to make one, because I've got to, as I mentioned, leave in just a minute, but just my view on it, for what it's worth, is that we should keep the plan intact. It's, I mean, we get pushback on plans from individual developers a lot, and, you know, I think the plan is the plan, and, you know, it needs to be adhered to. And if you give in here, you know, where else do you give in? So I just think this was a known, this was known going in, that this was part of the deal. I think we should stick to it, and I agree, and Chris's point that you don't build the curb and gutter on both sides yet, you cannot, like, spread that cost out a little bit, does also help to some extent. So if I'm around for the vote, that's how I'll vote, but if not, that's my opinion.
Thank you, Eric. Chris, go ahead.
A quick one. What's the access to Blatterman property right now?
Right, right now, they, they just have a, so yeah, so this is their property, and they have a business and a couple homes, and so they just have a driveway off of Meyer Road, and they've got the old remnants of Old Meyer Road that access their two homes. And so we showed that street in the neighborhood plan, coming about three years from the property.
So all those, it looks like individual parcels in the lower southeast corner, those are all part of that?
These are all by Blatterman, yep. They're all.
Alder Tierney, go ahead. Make sure you unmute.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I was just going to add one thing. I mean, there's talk about, you know, the focus on the, on the extension and, you know, delaying the extension. If something isn't done in terms of amending the plan, that also will delay any, any extension, because it's likely that this project will simply not come to fruition. And so we'll have that parcel at GE that, you know, won't be utilized for a project that's going to add jobs and tax base to our city's economy, and I don't know what development could take place there in the future. It would take a company with significant financial resources to be able to, you know, accept the burden of extending a roadway that would, for the foreseeable future, be a dead end. So I guess that's, that's a consideration. You know, any other developments in other areas of the city, oftentimes, there are situations where I guess it's fair to say the person or the company that wants to develop can like it or lump it. But right now, at this point in time, there is no, you know, no requirement for this developer to try to come in and, you know, develop the property. Again, it's ideally suited development for this property, you know, and create jobs and add to our tax base. They have the freedom to walk away if need be at this time. And then we'd end up with the status quo for the roadway for the foreseeable future. So that's just one consideration that should be made. So thank you.
Thank you, Alder Tierney. Are there any further questions for staff? Seeing none. Is there a motion? Alder Campbell, go ahead.
I've moved to place this item on file.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Alder Foster? Discussion? Alder Campbell, would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure. I think it's terrible public policy to amend a three-year-old plan just because the developer doesn't want to pay for a road, and to amend it in a way that's going to affect future development of not just one parcel, but multiple parcels in that area. So I just think it's, you know, if the developer can't afford to build that, their obligation, you know, to the city, as every other developer does, then they can't, then they can't afford to develop it, and it shouldn't be developed if they can't afford to develop it. So I don't see any reason why we should change a whole plan that is only three years old, that other property owners are, you know, have counted on for their future development plans, just because one party doesn't have enough money to build a road. a road.
Thank you, Alder Campbell. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I think we can all perhaps sympathize with the plight of not wanting to build infrastructure that doesn't seem like it's needed yet. But I think we've heard pretty clearly from staff that this is how roads are built. This is how development occurs and that we don't have any other mechanism to do this. And I think really more simply for us, the question is, do, do we want to update the plan? Do we not want to see a road in here as, as was adopted previously? And I don't, I think even Alder Tierney, you know, suggested, well, it's not that we really want to get rid of it forever. It's just sort of a way to get around this right now. And so, I mean, we're the Transportation Policy and Planning Board, and from a transportation planning perspective, I very much support the plan as it is. I think we, we need in one that roadway as part of our transportation system as well as an anchor for development. And so updating the plan to show something that we don't want as a way to allow this developer to get out of their obligation at this point seems like bad policy. So I support the motion.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor of placing this item on file, that is, amending the Yahrar Hills neighborhood development plan to remove the recommended northerly extension of Omeeda Drive. Badri, go ahead.
Um, is people house, do I have voting today? Can I vote today?
Uh, no, we do, we have a full, Margaret Bergamini is our first alternate, so she takes the one vacant position. So today you would not be, but thank you for checking. Or I should say, is Eric, yeah, Eric is still here. Okay. Once Eric does leave, Badri, then you will be in a voting status. So on the motion to place on file, amending the Yahrar Hills, Hills neighborhood development plan to remove the recommended northerly extension of Omeeda Drive, all those in favor of placing on file, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Chair believes the ayes have it. Chair also believes that it is unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing none, that is unanimous. We'll move on to Legisdar 61588, amending the Marsh Road Neighborhood Development Plan and City of Madison Official Map to modify the recommended street network and greenways for the portion of the planning area bounded by Boggs Road, South Stoughton Road, Tradewinds Parkway and Agriculture Drive Marsh Road. Tim, I see you have your hand up. Go ahead. Are you presenting?
Yes, thank you, Tim Parks from Planning Division Staff here on items four and five. Just thought I would start with a quick primer for the board regarding the official map. This is a tool that we have used a lot historically, but have not used very much in recent years to reserve land for new streets, transportation corridors, public buildings, parks, greenways, and et cetera. And so it's something that TPPB and, and other boards and commissions may not see very often. So it's kind of ironic that we have two items on the agenda tonight that deal with it. As noted on the screen right now, it's enabled by WISSTAT Section 62.23 Parent 6 and our own quote of ordinance is 16.25. And it basically allows, in this case, the city to map and reserve land for, for future public improvements like those that are listed. And the implementation or enforcement tool for the official map is that building permits generally may not be issued to construct the structure over a reservation that is shown on the official map. And that only applies to properties that are located in the city. What the official map is not, is not the actual land needed to construct the future street, transportation corridor, public building, park, greenway, et cetera. Reservation does not necessarily reflect all of the land that may be needed for the future improvement. And details on the improvement, like street cross sections, pond depths, project aesthetics and such, are typically determined in the future closer to the time of construction. And also, land that's shown on the official map must be acquired by the city in order for the improvement to be constructed. So there's a subsequent action after the official mapping that either through the dedication as a condition of a development, such as a subdivision plat, or through acquisition by the city in fee simple or as an easement, that's how we would take an officially mapped reservation and make it something tangible that we can use to construct whatever it is that improvement was the cause for the reservation. So basically how the official map works is it was adopted by ordinance in 1966. The official map is broken into quarter sections, given the size of the city. And there's a map for each quarter section and each amendment is adopted by a common council resolution following notice in the State Journal and notices the property owners within 300 feet of the, the property that's subject to the amendment. So with that, item number four, are some changes to the Marsh Road Neighborhood Plan to address some evolution that has occurred in the Marsh Road Planning Area since the neighborhood plan for that area was adopted in 99. And prior to that, official map sections or quarter sections adopted as far back as the late 1960s. So just very briefly, we're talking about, at the top, you have the official map as it exists now and how it impacts properties in the area between Bogus Road on the south and Tradewinds Parkway on the north, with Stoughton Road on the west and, and Marsh Road on the east and, and general goalposts for the area. We have the Belt Line at the top of these images. And again, Stoughton Road, US Highway 51 on the west. Because official mapping impacts the city's ability to issue building permits for projects, when you have large areas officially mapped on a property, it can make development a little bit challenging. And it's probably fair to say that the official map in particular is not a surgical instrument in terms of, of how these things are mapped. Generally, we identify a need, whether it's for transportation, for parkland, for greenways, for stormwater management and so forth. And then we would come back later through the development process and either through a subdivision or through an acquisition by the city, actually acquire the things that we need in order to provide the public improvements that were the cause for the official mapping in the first place. So basically, what we're doing with the Marsh Road Neighborhood Development Plan and the official map for this area is cleaning up areas that were sort of bluntly mapped over the last 20 to not quite 60 years so that we can identify the city's needs more clearly and release some of the encumbrances on the properties. And there's a preamble in the resolution for the Marsh Road Neighborhood Plan and Official Map that speaks to, on the east, the Dan County Humane Society property and on the west, the Dahl property at 4800 Bogus Road, that would be the primary beneficiaries of this cleanup effort. And then corresponding that, as attached to that resolution, the amendments to the Marsh Road Neighborhood Plan to reflect those changes. We would effectively have the same number of north style streets between Bogus Road and Tradewinds Parkway as the official map and neighborhood plans show now. But it would allow us to map those to reflect the city's future needs a little more succinctly and also relieve some of the stress on multi-human society and Dahl property so that they might be able to develop in the future. And I'm happy to answer any questions as we go forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. And do we have any resistance for public comment on this item? Thank you. Questions for staff? Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thank you. The kind of weird shaped funky reservation that we would be kind of getting rid of, is there any history as to what that was intended for, that curved one?
Uh, you know, a second, let me see if I can battle this up a little more succinctly here. The, all of the existing reservations are shown in, in that sort of candy striping color. But the large one that extends, as you can see my cursor, that sort of extends in an arc from Bogus Road across multiple parcels generally parallel. That was a greenway that was determined to be needed for Panito Creek, branch of which runs through this part of the planning area. And that was with the official mapping that occurred around 1966 in this area. And as you can see on the map, we have a green swath that runs generally through a good chunk of that area now. That was acquired in the mid to late 90s. So we established the, the greenway that we needed to, to convey Panito Creek through the affected area. So we would effectively no longer need that arc. And the official map already reflects the mapping of the greenway shown there in green. So I guess long answer to your question is no, we, we probably don't need that large area any longer.
Great. And the proposed alignment for the, I guess it's like a tormeline extension. I'm assuming that that kind of dog leg to the west is, is that a wetlands kind of issue? Is there a reason why it's not going straight north?
Yeah, there's a, an area of wetlands in the northeastern corner of the Humane Society property. This area in general has a considerable number of marshes and wetlands and such. And so the, the curve of that tormeline extension that Alder Foster was referring to is to reflect an area of wetlands in the northeast corner of the Humane Society site that generally city policy would be to avoid a, a wetland area, even if it's not necessarily considered to be of high value, which our understanding is this particular wetland isn't as valuable as some others in the planning area. But we would still like to avoid it if all possible and provide the level of connectivity that we desire while trying to reduce the burdens on the Humane Society who has some desires to build additional buildings on their property.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Further questions for staff? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion for this item? Alder Foster?
I approve.
Some motion. Is there a second? Alder Campbell?
Second.
Uh, thank you, Alder Campbell. Alder Foster, would you like to speak to your motion?
I think it's a good cleanup. Thanks for bringing that to us.
Hey, discussion. All right, seeing none. All those in favor of recommending approval of amending the Marsh Road Neighborhood Development Plan and City of Madison Official Map to modify the recommended street network and greenways for the portion of the planning area bounded by Bogus Road, South Stoughton Road, Tradewinds Parkway and Agriculture Drive Marsh Road, please say aye.
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 Opposed, no. The chair believes it is unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing none, that item passes unanimously. Bringing us to Legisdar 61904, draft resolution 61589, amending the official map area north of Milwaukee Street and east of Fair Oaks.
Yes, thank you again, Tim Parks with Planning Staff. This is a draft ordinance that Alder Foster asked to bring before the board for some preliminary input regarding implementation of the Milwaukee Street Special Area Plan. And the draft resolution calls for, let me get that back, mapping some street connections that were shown on the Milwaukee Street Special Area Plan that was adopted in December 2018. And on your screens right now, we have just some general goalposts on the western side, Fair Oaks Avenue on the east side, West Corporate Drive. And for those of you who are shoppers at the east side, Woodman's, also the main access into the Woodman's parking lot on the south side of Milwaukee Street, Milwaukee Street on the south, and then a large open space that the city owns already in the northeastern corner of this image. And then we have land owned by the Voight family generally east of Starkweather Creek, which is approximately here, and the eastern edge of the Voight property, which is here, which is also the eastern edge of, or I'm sorry, the municipal limits of the City of Madison and the town of Blooming Grove. So the proposed ordinance, which has not been formally introduced to the common council at this time, seeks to map some of the key street connections that were shown in the Milwaukee Street Special Area Plan. Most notably, an extension of Chicago Avenue from its current terminus at North Fair Oaks Avenue, easterly across Starkweather Creek and through the planning area to link up to a new intersection that would be created at the curve of West Corporate Drive right now. And then also, another connection would be the extension north of Walter Street to intersect that extended Chicago Avenue. And then also a couple of local streets, including a one block extension of Scheng Street north of Milwaukee Street and a new east-west street that would extend between Corporate Drive and the extension of Walter Street. These, this is basically a version of the previous map showing those connections, identifying that the proposed officially mapped streets would be probably the most critical streets, at least from an official mapping perspective. As you can see, there are additional streets recommended north of Milwaukee Street, basically from Milwaukee Street to the extension of Chicago Avenue, that would also likely be dedicated to the city and constructed as local streets to serve a finer grain development of these parcels in the affected area. Typically, we would seek to obtain those parcels through a subdivision review process, going back to the discussion on the Yahrar Hills plan that we just finished with a few moments ago. One of the primary ways that the city gets planned public streets is through the subdivision process. So we're officially mapping what staff feels would be the most critical connections to implement the special area plan. But those would not be the only street connections. There would be additional street connections as part of the, the planning and development of the parcels in the affected area. And just for reference, quickly scrolling through to show the relationship between the proposed streets shown in white, this was the primary land use and street plan adopted in the Milwaukee Street Special Area Plan. There's also an alternative that the plan included, which dealt with a large scale commercial reuse of what would primarily be the former Swiss Colony site, which is now being redeveloped by Amazon as a distribution facility. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, noting that this is in preliminary form, it has not been introduced, and that based on any feedback that we receive from the board tonight, we would work to address any changes that might be recommended, working with Alder Foster, on getting that formally introduced. And it would likely come back before the, the board for a formal recommendation prior to adoption. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. We did have one comment. Uh, we did have one comment submitted, uh, very late that I'm not sure everyone has had a chance to see, so I will read it. It's from John Steinies. Members of the Transportation Policy Planning Board, please do not push this transportation map plan through on Milwaukee Street Special Planning Area. There are a group of local citizens who have been meeting, including with Voight family regarding developing a community housing plan for this area. Shoving Chicago Avenue through in the way that is shown will impair the visioning they are engaging in or engaged in. Yes, the groups, the group is on the verge of reaching out to municipal members for support. Previous to this group, another related group was involved in addressing housing option issues in the same area. Please work with the community. Where is the public hearing outside of this committee today? Uh, second item of the comment, City of Madison Planning Department shoved the Milwaukee Street Special Planning Area off the shelf when they usurp years of community participation and planning department work to place Amazon on site. It is quite insulting that this proposal would now be pushed through. This action adds insult to injury for the local communities. The City of Madison aborted that special planning area to act on it now as if it is still legitimate is offensive. And do we have any other registrants for public comment on this item?
No.
Okay. Questions for staff? Uh, well, Chris, go ahead, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to add one thing to Tim's, uh, discussion there. I think the, uh, the boundary on the Milwaukee Streets, um, uh, portion is, uh, I, I noticed just recently that it does not include the, the full width that is programmed in the, in the Milwaukee Streets Special Area Plan. So, um, let me, let me see if I can pull up what I'm talking about here, one second.
I think I got it, Chris.
Okay, thank you. So, um, in the, in the, why, why don't I pull up the, uh, the plan though that, um, is the pictures from the plan here?
Uh, this is the tech facilitator, um, real quick. I have that we do have some speakers on, this is item five, correct?
Yes.
Okay, we have two speakers on item five.
Thank you. And do you want to go to those speakers now, or do you want us to finish, Tom?
Sorry, why don't you finish, please, Chris?
So, uh, as indicated in the plan, uh, there's two cross sections, um, for Milwaukee Streets. One is this, um, Fair Oaks to Walter section with, uh, essentially two, two lanes, uh, new median, uh, nice big terraces and a multi-use path on the north side. And then there's also one other section from Walter to Shank, which, uh, includes parking in, on both sides of the streets, so the difference is, uh, parking. And now, if you could go back to the map, Tim. Uh, after counting, um, all that feet for all those two cross sections, I believe that we are going to need to change the, uh, eastern portion of Milwaukee Street where it says 110 feet to 120. And then the area to the west would be, I believe, um, let me check my, I'm sorry, 122 and 106 are the two dimensions. So if that's the intention of the, uh, the board to implement those, that, that, uh, or to at least envision showing that in the, in the, in the plan, that we'll, we'll change this map accordingly.
All right, thank you, Chris. So Jesse, if you have visibility into those, um, registrants, if you could, please call on them and unmute them.
I can see them now. Um, Paul Schechter is the first one, wants to speak in opposition.
Hey.
Thanks. Paul, you have three minutes, you may go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I largely agree with the, the comments of John Steenis, and, um, while I'm not, uh, totally opposed to the, the plan, um, as presented by staff, uh, I do sort of question why, why these roads, why the changes were made, so forth and so on. I, I mean, I certainly agree with reducing the number of roads, uh, to just the quote unquote "key" roads, but, you know, what defines key roads? Why are they needed? Um, where's the community input? Uh, Chicago Bridge is, uh, very contentious in the community. It's going right through the, uh, Starkweather Creek watershed. Why do we need to pay homage to sort of fu- future vehicle transportation? That they could be bike paths or other, other modes of transportation? We don't necessarily need, um, concrete car roads through wetlands. So I, I just think it's, it needs more public input. Staff has a, a quite a lot of power, I, I feel just, not, not in this particular, but in my, um, experience with the city, uh, in general, it oftentimes, if it's not really contended, then it immediately goes through. And I think there needs to be a little bit more, uh, justification for these roads before, I guess, it goes to the next step. So, um, that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Paul. Um, and if you can see the next speaker, please go ahead.
Yep, Abby Davidson would like to speak in opposition. All right.
Hi Abby, you have three minutes, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Um, so I want to thank the staff for showing the, the images and the streetscape. Um, there's, there's definitely a lot going on here, and so when I saw the map, um, just a couple hours ago, I figured, you know, that's, there's definitely a lot more discussion that needs to be had, and it sounds like this isn't the final proposal. Um, one thing I, I did like about it is that there seemed to be a lot fewer roads than the special area plan, um, because this is a really beautiful area, and I just, I want to see that quality re-preserved as it moves towards development. Um, and being so close to the bus transfer point, there's a really good potential for a more car light development. So I'd like to see green space and, and, and housing and, and all that be, be prioritized over just adding more roads.
All right, thank you, Abby. Hold on here.
There. There's one more registrant.
Okay, uh, go ahead, Anne.
Matthew Miller, PhD, does not want to speak but is available to answer questions in opposition.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right then, uh, questions for staff, I believe is where we are. So Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thank you. So I guess to, to some of those comments, I, I, which I had heard before around this concern of the Chicago, um, Avenue connection to Fair Oaks, so that would obviously require crossing the Starkweather Creek there, um, you know, with the bridge and, uh, kind of breaking that greenway. Was there ever, uh, an alternative developed that, um, kind of would have that Chicago Avenue coming back down to Milwaukee without making that, uh, crossing across the, the greenway, or is that something that could be explored?
Um, Dan McCullough here. I was the project manager for the Milwaukee Area Special Area Plan, or the Milwaukee Street Special Area Plan. Um, so when we started that Milwaukee Street Special Area Plan, council had previously adopted, uh, very recently, the Darbo Worthington Starkweather Plan, which also included in the area. Um, that plan, um, did show the Chicago Avenue extension, crossing, um, extending beyond Fair Oaks and crossing into, uh, the Voight property as part of it. Um, further, what we heard during that process, um, was that, um, you know, the, the community valued having a, a neighborhood on the Voight property that was connected to East Morland to the south, but also a neighborhood to the east, uh, and west, I'm sorry, the west. Um, you know, one of our concerns is if that connection doesn't occur, um, really it's that, that area is very limited only to connections off Milwaukee Street. Um, I think we did a fairly extensive outreach, and I, I guess I can talk a little bit more too about the street grid that, that went on and, and why it took the form it did. Um, one of the things that we heard is a desire for a walkable community with small blocks and, uh, interconnected street grid, uh, very similar to East Morland to the south and the Darbo Worthington Starkweather neighborhood to the east. And, and so that is the, kind of, one of those, those main points of why the, the blocks are relatively small, uh, as they typically are in traditional neighborhoods. Um, so that, so that's really how it took that initial form. But there were not alternatives that were looked at without that connection because it had previously been adopted by council, or had been included in previously adopted plans adopted by council.
Thank you. And then I have one other question for, um, I think maybe for Chris regarding what you had just presented around the Milwaukee Street right-of-way needs. Um, could you go, maybe just pull that up again and clarify, um, kind of the expanded right-of-way needs would be needed for, um, for which alternative?
Yeah, so, um, right on that eastern section right there, we're showing a 110-foot right-of-way for Milwaukee Street, and based on the plan, I believe that should be 122. And then, as, as Tim probably mentioned before, we can always choose to do less of this in the future, but if you want to show the, pretty much the same dimensions that are shown in the plan, I think that should, should be a 122. And then, um, from Walter to, uh, Fair Oaks, I believe that should be a 106. And, uh, uh, right now, we're not getting a full 106 with that area B as shown. So assuming that we want to show the, you know, the, the most, uh, dedications in the future, I think we'd want to show that, uh, those dimensions right now. And like I said, when we end up designing the streets and, and getting, uh, to the point of developing and, or reconstruction of the street, we can, we can always choose to do less. But right now, that 14 feet would not allow us to build that full section as shown in the plan.
Thanks, and when, I, I remember when this went through, I think this was maybe still back when we had ped bike motor vehicle, and then there was, um, I think some more conversation at Plan Commission, and there was some conversation around having a shared use path on both sides of the corridor instead of just on the, the north side. And, um, I mean, I think Plan Commission memorialized that in a rec, some kind of recommendation, basically just sort of like, let's continue to explore that before we, you know, land on a final option. And I think, um, you know, we were, yeah, I think they also recommended doing that Milwaukee Street corridor study. Um, so I guess my, my question is, would the, what you just recommended, would that also accommodate, um, the potential for the, a shared use path on both sides, um, rather than just the north side, or would we need any more to, to accommodate that option as well?
If we, um, if you want to, could you, Tim, sorry, could you bring that up one more time? That multi-use path that we're showing on the north side is kind of a, you know, a supersized one, kind of like a John Nolan drive, kind of got separate ped bike, one-way bike in the other direction. So if we went to a more traditional, um, shared use path, like a 10-foot shared use path on both sides, those numbers I, I stated before would, would give us that. But if we wanted the, um, the, you know, the separated ped and bike facilities shown in the, in the plan, you know, so that's, that's generally about a 15 to, you know, 15-foot wide facility. So if we wanted the south side to be, uh, either a 10 or a 15, we'd just have to add those amounts. If we took five feet from the north side and gave it to the south side to have more traditional multi-use paths on both sides, then those numbers would work. Otherwise, I'd have to pull them off.
And, and one thing that I might add to that as well, I went back and checked the tape on the, the Plan Commission debate over that. Um, what they actually debated was having a multi-use path on the north side and on street bike lanes. Um, so they did not, um, to my knowledge, discuss one on the south, but as, as Chris was saying, it certainly probably could be accommodated in that design.
Yeah, maybe you could watch the recording from, uh, Ped Bikes, I think that's where that one was. Uh, you're right, a Plan Commission microwave, I think, wanted to get bike lanes in addition to the shared use, but the, the two shared use, I think, with that, that bike. But it sounds like we, with some modifications, the current proposal might be able to accommodate, uh, both. So, thank you.
Uh, Baltazar, go ahead.
Hello, everybody, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, you know, I think, uh, I just, I just have a question for staff. We did hear a number of folks talking about community outreach, uh, community input, and, you know, uh, kind of, if you can just speak to, maybe if there was some of that, or if it wasn't, you know, I would just like to, uh, learn a little bit more about, about that.
Uh, sure. Um, so, so I'm probably the best to answer that question, so, um, and my memory is a little fuzzy because it was a couple of years ago, and I don't have all the dates in front of me, but we had at least two public open houses. Um, one, I think this, one was at, um, an elementary, the elementary school right in, in the area.
Shank.
Shank, thank you. I remember there was a statewide tornado drill, so we actually had to pause our presentation for about a minute because no one could hear. Uh, the second major open house was at the Goodman Community Center. Um, that one, both were probably attended by, I would say, 60 to 100 people. Um, we also met with, uh, the East Morland Neighborhood Association, we met with the Friends of Starkweather Creek. We were happy to meet with, with anybody, um, who, who requested a meeting. Um, you know, I, I think through, probably the, the major issue that I recall from the public outreach was not the, the concepts. Um, the major issue was whether or not the city should pursue acquisition of the northern half of the Voight property for a phosphorus capture facility. Um, that was unpopular, the city has, to my knowledge, uh, no, they're no longer pursuing that. Um, and, and so we, we certainly didn't get the impression that, or the impression that we were left with, uh, was that the, the surrounding areas, uh, generally supported the plan. Um, and certainly, you know, through the approval process, I don't recall any major issues beyond the, the phosphorus facility.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Baltazar. Um, Alder Foster, you're up next.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, also kind of try and help answer that and maybe fill in the dots for a few folks here, so, um, and Tim Parks mentioned this previously about the purpose of this mapping process. So, um, the special area plan that kind of called for all of this, you know, and, and as Dan said, had public participation process, et cetera, that was, you know, a, a few years ago. And the reason this is in front of us now is because, um, with the Amazon proposal that came up a few months back, um, it, um, at, at least I personally, um, recognized that we did not really translate that adopted plan into any changes in our zoning map or in our roadmap. Um, and so I, I think Tim said that that's something that we used to do more on the, the mapping side, we used to do that more back in the day, haven't done it a lot recently. So my ask, uh, following that Amazon debate was for planning staff to prepare the changes that would correspond to the plan that was adopted. So, um, that means updating zoning where appropriate, as well as mapping out the, um, road connections that were in the adopted special area plan. So that's why it may feel right now a little bit sort of disdunked and why this is kind of coming out of nowhere, is really the planning work behind this, the public, um, outreach and engagement and the decision-making around it, all happened with the special area plan and when that was adopted. And so what we're doing right now is really sort of just, um, taking the first step in implementing that plan, which is updating our official maps to reflect the zoning and the street network that was called for in that plan. And so that's why it's sort of coming out of left field for some people and why it's here tonight, um, and staff just brought it here as sort of an early preview. Um, but then the, the desire would be to introduce this, it would come back to TPPB as part of that official introduction, um, and then you would be asked to approve it at that point. But I just wanted to kind of explain why, why we're seeing this now and where it came from.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Uh, Chris McHale, go ahead.
Yep, thanks. Um, so, uh, thanks to staff for the explanation of reservations in the beginning, uh, because I, this is new to me, but, um, you get the impression listening to some of the comments that, um, some folks feel sort of like the city is, to some extent, picking favorites and choosing, you know, where, where, what alignments they're going to go with out of the plan right now. Um, so could you just speak hopefully very briefly to how this fits into the bigger So could you just speak hopefully very briefly to how this fits into the bigger picture of of fulfilling the plan?
Sure, Tim. Could you share the the graphic with the, actually, you know, I can share. I have the same file. Let me hold on. Perfect. Yes, thank you. So we we did a, you know, when this came about, we were asked to take a look about, you know, what are the streets that are most critical for the plan area? And really, when we when we create plans, there's really two major types of streets that, you know, when we think about streets that are really critical for establishing important connections. And then streets that we're really focused about making sure the block sizes aren't super big, that we're still creating walkable communities. You know, having that public access to make sure that when development occurs, we have development on streets and we're facilitating a development pattern consistent with the characters of neighborhoods that we are looking for. So when we did this, you know, a couple, obviously, there's those those major streets that we think are going to be critical are going to be Chicago Avenue as well as Walter Street. Going beyond, the reason why we included Shank Street. At one point in time, there was discussion for the East Transfer Point being near capacity and if they could get access onto a public road to the west, that would be able to expand that capacity by a couple buses. So having that public right of way there could benefit them. And then starting to create, you know, that that street to the north of Milwaukee Street, kind of creating that parallel grid at an appropriate point where we have those block depths. You know, kind of going to those other streets that we didn't map, you know, though we still expect there to be a neighborhood street grid there. But exactly, you know, how those happen, the the exact position, those are, you know, I think the city is a little more flexible, you know, until then we see the development proposals come forward. You know, when we're going into an official map, we're basically saying this street really should occur in this pretty pretty close to this location. And so I think that was the intent with the the streets that we're recommending for official mapping.
Thanks.
Margaret, go ahead.
Yeah, first a quick question, I think, for Tim Parks on this. The, in our earlier discussion about the southeast corner of town, you discussed, you you mentioned city policy on preservation of wetlands. So I'm curious, I'm looking at the map, which isn't up at the moment. But this extension of Chicago Avenue. What, how how exactly would, well, I know nothing is exact, but could you speak to the impact on the wetlands connected with those ponds and with Starkweather Creek of this roadway, of this proposed roadway?
Yeah, I can hum a few bars on that and I might defer to Chris Pedakowski on some more of the details because he comes from the the street construction discipline. But, you know, the city's goal to avoid wetlands isn't absolute. And some connections are considered to be, you know, critical enough that, you know, a creek crossing, such as what we're discussing here. And the mitigation efforts that that would entail is, you know, reason to, you know, potentially, you know, cross Starkweather Creek and mitigate the impacts that 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 would entail. But again, I would I would recommend that Chris also maybe jump in as well.
Actually, Tim, I have a a map of the wetlands, floodplains and floodway that I could share really quick. So the, oh, cancel, hit the wrong button. So as you can see, the Chicago Avenue extension is right here. It actually avoids the wetlands. There would be a need to cross the creek with a bridge. That is part of the plan. It would, it is, you know, crossing a little bit of flood plain. But but it is avoiding wetlands.
And we'd we'd bridge over that. So we'd set our abutments outside of that floodway. And be able to largely avoid the wet the wetlands in this location.
And a follow-up question, if I may. It's a little odd because we didn't feel like we didn't get a chance to jump in and ask questions of the attendees. So the people who commented. So Grant, maybe this is a question for you. You may be more aware than I am of this planning process that John Steiney's referred to, which I believe is a housing and agricultural development possibility. Could you speak a little bit, if if you know, where they are at with that with that proposal? Are you familiar with it?
It looks like we've still got Abby Davidson and Paul Schechter on, who are both involved with that, so they might be in a better position to answer it.
Abby or Paul, can you give us some perspective on that?
They're still showing up.
Here. Hi. Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Abby.
Yeah, well, we're still meeting. We're still meeting. We're we're definitely interested in putting forth a proposal.
And do you have a timeline?
I think a lot of that's dependent on the on how the city, how quickly the city wants to move forward.
Okay. And so then I will go back to Alder Foster and ask.
Paul also had a had a a comment that he wanted to make.
Okay.
Okay, well, go ahead, Paul.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, I was muted for a long time. Yes, so we are very much active. There is a group of several hundred people, I think our email list is close to three hundred now. We've been meeting bi-weekly every two weeks since January. So nine months or so, and before that it was still alive, but fairly informal. And we have a dedicated nonprofit that has been organized. There's been several thousand dollars of money raised. We've been talking to various different stakeholders. We're doing strategic planning and other types of work in this area. So there's a, I would say, hundreds, if not thousands, of people ours that have gone into this project already. And I guess what I would, my my main concern is that these choices of of key roadways are somewhat arbitrarily chosen and depending on how firm this decision is, it may or may not align with with the interests of these hundreds of people that have been planning this for for some time. Now, admittedly, it's not set in stone. We've had many conversations with the Voight family. And there's a lot more work to do, but we would just like to be part of the conversation as opposed to, you know, staff choosing which roads are going to be there and that's it. Dialogue is a nice thing to have. That's all.
Thank you.
Sorry. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Paul, and thank you, Margaret. Baltasar, you're up next.
Yeah, I I keep going. So and the thanks, thanks for answering all these questions, you know, very, 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 very important. So I just have a quick question for staff. This is not what was introduced during the community input sessions some years ago, right? Is this, this is like a different model based on what was introduced before? Or or is it similar?
I would say it's a subset of what was introduced before. I think we tried to distill the plan down to its most critical components. And then, you know, if we are going to use the official map as a tool, we want to do that with those really essential connections. And then leave more flexibility for the development community to have proposals that would come forward. Tim, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I'll just, you know, kind of piggyback on that, that it's basically an implementation strategy where we're, we have a plan where we know, you know, the type of development we want, what we want to preserve. There's a lot of parkland, both active and passive parkland north of Chicago Avenue that is preserved and expanded through the, in the plan and will be through implementation of the plan. And the official map is is basically a part of the implementation strategy. It's not often used in recent years, but it's never gone away as a way for the city to advance the the goals and objectives that it's identified in a detailed planning process. And so what we're doing with with Walter Street, with Shank Street, the East West Street, and also Chicago Avenue is identifying those critical connections that we feel that need to be implemented and really sort of declaring our intent to do that. We talked in the previous presentation about the, you know, the the purpose and limitations of the official map. Those still apply here. It's just advancing the goals and objectives that we outlined about two years ago with the Milwaukee Street Special Area Plan. In this case, regarding the the level of connectivity that we're hoping to implement going forward.
Thank you very much. One of the, so I keep going back to the to the whole concept of housing. You know, and I'm gonna kind of doing what Robert does, you know, kind of think on my own and hopefully I can make sense of it. But, I mean, good it, how difficult could it be for to do more community input? You know, I think my 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 biggest, you know, I I go back to this housing component in a city that has a lot of issues with housing. I I don't I don't have the answers. I just I just put it out there, you know, is this? And and I don't know many, I don't know much about this plan, you know, I have to, you know, be very clear in that area. But I think, you know, if there is, if there is a group that might be working or interested in doing some sort of housing development, I mean, I don't know, I I think I'm just concerned that, I think, if if there is an opportunity for more more dialogue, that we should have more dialogue. You know, this is the first time that I that I see this, you know, so I think, you know, I will, I would like to learn more about this, you know, I would like to, just because of some of those issues and concerns that the community has, and a number of community members, I want to say. Anyway, so thank you again, you know, I think, you know, thanks for all the work that you guys are doing with all of this. I know it's hard.
Go ahead, Tim.
Oh, I'll give, I'll give a kind of high-level technical answer. And it wasn't really a tangent that I thought we would would go down tonight with this preliminary item, but I think it might be useful for the board to kind of understand where we are. From a development review process point of things, you know, just to really distill it to its essence, the the development process. You know, in terms of zoning, subdivision of land, construction of buildings, streets, infrastructure, things like that. Is, you know, we'll just ballpark it as about a seventy-five step process. And we're really on step two or three of that process. From the perspective that the the majority of the developable property in the Milwaukee Street Special Area Plan, the the land that's not developed, which is an important distinction compared to the former Swiss Colony, now Amazon site, is the Voight property on the western half of the planning area. And that land is not currently in the city of Madison. We couldn't even, if we wanted to today, bring it into the city of Madison because of a cooperative plan that we have with Conneble Grove that has very specific rules about how that property is to develop, when it's supposed to come from the town into the city. We're actually working on some changes to that plan with the town. They've been great partners of ours over the last few years, including through the Milwaukee Street Special Area Planning Process, which the town also adopted. But the Voight property has to be brought into the city before anybody can put housing on that property. There would have to be, after the property comes into the city through the attachment process, there would have to be zoning consistent with the the special area plan and with the comprehensive plan. There would have to be subdivision plan of the property that would have to be consistent with the general layout for the Voight property that's identified. And there's also a public improvement process that is part of the development of property, which we talked about a little bit during the Ahura Hills item. And also a little bit during the Marsh Road item that just preceded this one. Where through the development process, through the subdivision of land in particular, that's how we get the streets. That's how we get the water and the sewer connections that are needed to serve new housing in the city. And, you know, those are probably steps somewhere in the teens through low thirties of that seventy-five step process. I can tell you that we're aware of the group that Ms. Davidson and Mr. Schechter are working with. We're, we've had, I don't know that we've had formal discussions with them about their concept. Maybe Dan would be able to answer that. We have been in regular communication with the Voight family and their representatives about their desire to divide the property. There's kind of a chicken and egg thing happening. It's an attractive development parcel. It could yield a lot of benefits, both publicly and privately. But someone has to take that first step in terms of either acquiring the property and rezoning it and subdividing it in the city. Or the the Voights have to do that, and they've had conversations both ways. And so, you know, we're 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 probably looking at a lengthy process with a lot of steps involved in it. Whoever proposes to develop the Voight property and some of the smaller properties to the east of the Voight property between it and the Amazon parcels are are going to go through a pretty intensive process that involves community engagement, involvement with the district alder or alders, because a portion of the planning area is also on the edge of the sixth district, Marsha Rummel. So there's, there's a lot of steps in the process. There will be a lot of opportunities for input, engagement with city staff like Dan, myself, Chris and others, many, many others. So it's it's a lengthy process and what we're talking about tonight preliminarily is one of those very, very early steps in what is a long and involved process. And I can answer any questions about the, you know, the development process that Voight and other parcels within this affected area may maybe going through in the coming years. Thank you.
And and the only other thing I'd add to that is housing was a major focus of the Milwaukee Street Special Area Plan. Similar to kind of what what we just went through with Oscar Myers, you know, really trying to link a relatively high-density housing with really good transit access that is provided by the East Transfer Point. And, you know, kind of as I mentioned before, having those walkable grids, similar neighborhood characters to the surrounding area, that's kind of how we got to where we are. But the current recommendations for that Voight property are a significant amount of housing as well.
Thank you very much for for that explanation.
All right. Alder Foster, you're up next.
Thanks. I just wanted to distill a little bit since I, hopefully, we'll be seeing more of these map amendments in the future related to the transportation system. So again, this is mostly confusing because it's very detached from the previous planning process. We more recently did an Oscar Myers Special Area Plan. It's probably more familiar to folks. And I believe that there is is or will be work around translating that adopted plan similarly with some zoning changes, et cetera. So it will probably make more sense when we see it closer to the it within the context of the the Special Area Plan adoption. So it will probably make more sense when we see it closer to the, it within the context of the, the special area plan adoption. Um, in this case, we just didn't do it. And so that's why it's here today. Um, but I, I just want to really stress that the, this action, mapping these roads on here is really just about us as a city exercising a right that we have, that we're given by the, the state to be able to, to say, we're planning someday to have a road here and we're going to put it on this map. And that means the property owners can't just go and build, build a building there where we're saying we're going to have a road someday. So really the, the only thing this is doing is sort of protecting that space for us as a community to build a road that we say we're planning on building. If we want to change the alignment of that road in the future, if the, someone who's developing the land wants to come to us and say, hey, we think we have a better plan. We want to put the road here and here instead of here. And if we as a city, the Transportation Policy and Planning Board and the Plan Commission say, y'all, that looks like a good plan. We can, we can move forward with that. It's not going to tie our hands in any way. It's really just us um, kind of saving this so that, that road connection through the back there. If this is adopted, that means Amazon can't just at will go and build a new building behind their current one and say, oops, I guess you can't have a road there anymore, which without mapping it, they, they would be able to do that. So this is really just securing for us the opportunity to build that road as we said that we would like to as part of our plan.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Margaret, go ahead.
Yeah, just a relatively minor point, but one for clarification. The city doesn't own the East Transfer Point, does it?
The city does own the East Transfer Point.
The city owns that land?
That's correct.
All right.
Thank you, Margaret. Um, any further questions for staff? Seeing none. Is there a motion?
I think this was just an informational only.
Oh, I see. Thank you, Alder Foster. Okay, uh, if there are no more questions for staff and no more discussion or comments, we'll move on to the next item. All right, discussion of, so Legisdar 61899, Discussion of Residential Parking Permit Program, RP3, and potential expansion of the Residential Parking Only, RPO program. And I think Sabrina is gonna do a presentation, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes. Hi, good evening.
Hi, Sabrina.
Whoa. Um, a little bit of, uh, background on this. The presentation is, um, kind of an overview of the, the current RP3 program and some potential options to consider. Um, through that MOPES, uh, parking study, one of the components uh, that we're asked to look at is the residential parking permit program. Um, briefly, some of the issues, um, and concerns that we've heard both recently and over the years. Uh, one is the impact of new development, um, multifamily, which are not eligible for uh, RP3 or RPO permits. Uh, but with current restrictions, uh, in effect between 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM, um, residents can still park, uh, without a permit overnight. Uh, and some concern about impacts on, uh, on other residents and uh, folks not using potentially available off-street, um, parking within their buildings uh, with, with available free on-street parking as an option. Um, also just the, uh, timing of enforcement with time limits. Um, if you've got a two-hour time limit restriction, essentially that means enforcement ends at 4:00 PM. Um, also with the RP3 program, um, there are, well, there's currently no visitor program, um, in the city of Madison. But, um, with RP3, state statute would prohibit, uh, visitor parking permit program um, from being created for those areas. So, um, we'll go into that a little bit further here and I'll share my screen. Okay, so, um, quickly, the, the purpose, or at least, uh, as it is currently written from ordinance is, uh, to establish a mechanisms where, uh, residents are afforded the opportunity for limited storage to the partial exclusion of commuter vehicles. Uh, the intent of these programs are to reduce, uh, commuting, uh, waste air pollution and reduce, uh, total vehicle miles traveled. Um, illegal parking and related health and safety standard hazards. Uh, currently there are 25 areas. Eligible residents in one of those areas can purchase, uh, a permit for their area. And it's valid for any street, um, within that boundary area. Uh, in terms of the programs and how they work, uh, when we talk about RP3, uh, that's the one-hour, two-hour time limit restrictions. Uh, residents are allowed to park in excess of those. The restrictions are enforced either, um, Monday through Friday or Monday through Saturday, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Um, and this is intended, uh, and is relatively effective at reducing commuter, uh, impact uh, and availability for residents, uh, since most commuters are uh, needing longer than one or two hours, uh, to park if they're working a eight to 10-hour workday. Uh, uh, again, the RP3 is a one-hour, two-hour restriction. So these are the, uh, signs here where you'll see a two-hour time limit and a number in the lower left-hand corner that indicates if you have a permit of the area number, you are exempt if you park for, uh, up to 48 hours, uh, in that location, barring any other posted restrictions. Um, the current RPO, which is resident parking only, was actually created in 2000. This was added on to our existing RP3 program. Um, and our ordinance currently has that where if you're creating an RPO street, uh, 50% of the block is designated for resident permit parking only. Uh, and then 50% is unrestricted. So, uh, the other half of the spaces on the block, um, anyone can park up to 48 hours, you know, again, barring any, uh, other posted restrictions. Um, it was actually created this way to, uh, create an, an option for certain neighborhoods that uh, were heavily impacted but wanted to still allow some, uh, community impact um, to, to occur on the streets. So, uh, near West High School where there was a desire to accommodate some of the students uh, in teacher parking on, on streets, but also to, uh, provide some, uh, reserved parking for residents. Uh, in terms of our, our current program, um, requirements for a street to be posted, it does have to be at least 50% residential. So, uh, commercial areas are, are not eligible. Uh, it currently goes through a petition process where a majority of the residents on, uh, a block request to, to install restrictions and a willingness to pay for the permit, uh, for that program. Uh, it also has to be commuter impacted. So we actually go out and do studies during typical, uh, daytime workday periods and, uh, do license plate studies and, and occupancy to, uh, determine that a majority of the, uh, legal on-street parking spaces are in fact commuter impacted. Uh, there is also, um, a newer process where, uh, in lieu of a petition process, especially in areas where there are uh, large numbers of residents or maybe transient, uh, areas where you've got, um, students, uh, moving maybe in and out, um, at different times of the year or, or each year, where it could be difficult to get signatures from a, a majority of folks. There's a process for designating, uh, through a public hearing process that goes to the Transportation Commission. Um, but again, with, uh, each process, uh, it still does need to be the commuter, uh, commuter impact requirement and, and it's still done on a block-by-block basis. Um, a couple of pros and cons of RP3 versus RPO. And, and I should note that currently we have just a handful of blocks that are currently designated as RPO. The vast majority are time limit restrictions with RP3. Um, but looking at some, some advantages of considering, uh, an RPO program. Uh, in terms of enforcement, uh, it's much more effective to, to enforce, uh, either a permit or no permit uh, versus shocking and, uh, enforcement officers having to return, uh, one or two hours later to identify violators. Um, so greater coverage and, uh, efficiency of, of enforcing those areas i- is, uh, available with an RPO. Uh, also with, with the RPO, because that requires a permit at all times, uh, those can be enforced for the full, full posted time restrictions of 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Whereas if you, uh, have a two-hour posted time limit, uh, folks are essentially, uh, able to park without a permit from 4:00 PM to 10:00 AM. Uh, and also we would expect compliance, uh, would likely be higher with, uh, resident permit parking only. Um, some other considerations with, uh, an RPO program. Again, we don't currently have a, a guest permit program. Uh, it does allow for it with RPO, but not for time limit restrictions. Um, the, the benefit of however, of having those RP3 one-hour and two-hour is that, uh, visitors can come, um, for short periods of time to park either the one or two-hour posted limit without needing a permit. Uh, so it does, you know, an RPO program could potentially put a greater burden on, uh, on homeowners and, and visitors who would be, uh, unable to park during those timeframes without a permit. Uh, and currently we do not have, uh, a guest permit program. So one would need to be developed if we were to consider, um, some changes to, uh, an RPO. Um, and just wanted to kind of pose some, some questions, get some feedback, um, for consideration and, and discussion. Um, you know, when we talk about RPO, we do currently have that program, but it's a 50/50. So really only 50% of the block is, uh, is restricted. Uh, so most neighborhoods don't want that because they feel like, um, uh, there is not enough available parking for, for residents, uh, under, um, that scenario. Um, but it would be an option, uh, to do a higher percentage. It would require an ordinance change. Um, but there is, um, nothing in, in statute that requires us to, to unrestrict. Uh, 50% of it that is determined by, um, our ordinances for the purpose of, of that other program. Um, so just some, some questions, you know, should time limit, uh, RP3 restrictions, uh, be considered for replacement by a new 100% permit only uh, option or other percentage? Um, also would that, um, address the concerns of residents in terms of having extended enforcement hours uh, until that full 6:00 PM? Um, also questions on, uh, you know, would, uh, or should a guest permit program, uh, be implemented? Or would having, uh, some number of spaces left on the street as unrestricted uh, be, be a better option? Um, and then also some of the, the comments that we've heard, um, throughout the years too, from, from residents and commission members are the process of, um, determining kind of a block-by-block basis, a sort of a, a whack-mole process uh, versus looking at things, um, or designating things through a different process where perhaps the city would take a proactive approach, um, to, to identify those areas likely to be impacted um, by new development or, or other uses, um, and, and designate through a, a different process rather than, uh, a resident-driven petition process. Um, so those are, I guess, some, a couple questions I have for the group and looking for just some thoughts, feedback on, um, the programs in general. Uh, what what an RPO, um, program benefits that, that you might see if, if we're to consider, um, changing that out?
Thank you, Sabrina. And do we have any registrations for a public comment on this item?
No.
Okay, thank you. Um, Chris McHale, you're up first.
Thanks. Uh, my first question is, it's my only question right now, but, uh, the, uh, eight to, eight to six time limit on the RP3s, have we determined that we could not just expand that as needed? And if so, um, would it have to be uniformly like all RP3s are eight to six or, um, we do it, uh, case by case?
Sure. So, um, when this has been looked at before to extend those hours, say to 8:00 PM or 10:00 PM, uh, the, the legal opinion, uh, has been that under the federal equal protection clause, um, really any restrictions and distinctions you draw through such a program where you're providing, um, use for residents and, and not for other members of the public, uh, does need to, uh, I guess directly relate and have a rational relationship through the purpose and goals of the stated program. So our stated purpose is to reduce commuter impact, uh, VMP congestion. Um, and so under that rationale, uh, extending those hours to, you know, 10:00 PM would not be legal, uh, under our current ordinance or our current program because it's, um, there aren't commuters in most areas past probably 5:00, 6:00 PM. Uh, and so without actually having commuter impact, um, we would just be drawing, um, giving preference without any, um, stated sort of rational relationship to the city's needs.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry, Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, can you share with us, Sabrina, what's the relevance state statute or statutes that kind of put the framework for us around what we can and can't do?
Sure. I don't think, only if I have those. It might take me a minute to pull those.
Or you, you can send them later if, um, if you have them on.
Yeah, I, I do have those handy. I'm just not connected to, uh, all of the drives because I'm told it slows down the network. So I will certainly send those to you.
Okay, um, uh, I guess one of my then specific questions kind of connected to that is I, I believe we have a, at least a certain interpretation right now around what we can charge. That it's, needs to be sort of just kind of covering the cost of the program or something like that. And I know there's been, there was discussion, I think Alder Zeller is back when she was still on council, raised some questions around that and you know, what flexibility we have. Um, do, do, do those restrictions apply the same to both RP3 and RPO, whatever we decide they are?
They, they do. Um, so with the permit program, it can be, um, you know, revenue neutral. We can't make a profit off of those. Uh, so we can only recoup the expenses. Uh, at this point, I believe our permit is $42 for an annual permit. Several years ago, the enforcement costs associated with the program were, um, I guess began to be tracked under this program. So we're able to actually capture those. Uh, at this point, um, you know, under law, we could increase that permit fee um, at least over 100, uh, earlier calculations that, I guess the question would be whether by law we can recoup um, to date losses or whether, uh, we would be looking at on an annual basis. Um, but just looking at an annual basis of operating costs, uh, we'd be looking at about 110, $215 annual permit fee. Uh, would, would be legal. Um, so we do have the ability to, to raise that significantly. Um, the question is whether the, the desire to, to do so and, um, certainly concerns from, from residents about those two.
And do we have, um, is there any similar limits or restrictions on what we charge for metered on-street parking? Or is that just at-will?
Um, just determined by the council.
Okay. And so the, the, that limitation is specific to a residential parking permit program and per statute then?
I'd have to, you know, I don't want to comment on the specific statute. My understanding is any such, um, type of permit programs um, are subject to, to that requirement. I know there are other, um, similar programs in the city that also, um, are cap play, having to be revenue neutral. But, um, I couldn't give you the exact reference on, on what those requirements are or the distinction.
Okay, um, and then I guess maybe just a, a bit of a comment. I'm, I don't have a good I don't have a good response to some of the questions that you posed in here at this point, mostly because I'm, I think I'm still struggling kind of connecting this decision with our kind of broader goals around parking. So I know the MOPEs sort of study has been kind of out there. And, I mean, I certainly understand one of the goals of making sure that residents have access to on-street parking close to where they live. Some of the other objectives in the current ordinance seem fishy to me. The idea that we're using RP3 to reduce VMT and emissions. I don't quite follow the logic of that, honestly. But I guess, partly, I think it would be valuable to figure out that kind of bigger strategy that we have around parking. You know, what are our goals with it? Is it to ensure bid supply to existing residents or, you know, single-family homeowners versus new apartment residents? Are we wanting to maximize how much money we're making off of it? Do we want, like, you know, what are our kind of broader goals around it? I think would help me be able to provide better guidance around implementation, whether we kind of stick with our current process or if we start shifting more towards RPO or if we have some, you know, hybrid model where you've got RPO plus not. And in that case, would we want to consider metering what's not part of the RPO rather than just leaving it unrestricted? So I've kind of got a lot of questions, but I think just personally, I'm struggling, given some good feedback because I don't, I don't think we've really established our broader kind of parking-related goals and strategies yet.
All right, Baltazar, you're next. Go ahead.
Thanks for the information. I'm learning a lot today with all this RPO and RP3. So just one question. As we continue, as this continues, have we thought of doing a social justice impact into this? I just, when I hear this, I just, I just feel like the good-to-do neighbors, neighborhoods, you know, being very exclusive, you know, and not allowing other folks that who might need to go there for a specific reason. You know, they might work around there, they might clean houses. They might not have that access to be able to park there. So I'm just, I think when I see all these things about the, you know, the RPO, all these social justice inequities jump into my head. So, you know, and since we are talking about this, you know, I will even add another question, you know. How is this impacting our community? I mean, are we, are we continuing to separate the folks who are at the beautiful space against those folks where you can park whenever, you know? Anyway, so I just brought that up. And I know it's going to be a long conversation and a long process. Thanks for considering that.
Thanks, Baltazar. Tom, it looks like you want to comment on that or?
Yeah, I just want to make a, actually, I want to make a subsequent comment to both Alder Foster and Alder, or not Alder, but Board Member Baltazar. Just today, we had a meeting regarding understanding the overall purpose and goal because that could be many-faceted. Some president might say, goal is for us to have a parking space, you know, in front of our house. In relation to the TDM, it was to reduce VMP, VMT, while minimizing, you know, locational impacts. And so, I think your comment is a very good one and that we could build on that and try and understand, flesh out what that means because that really helps define things. And all, Board Mayor Baltazar, what you said is actually a very pertinent question. In fact, we kind of had to struggle with that very issue right around West High School, where there's, you might say, there's a need for students that live in different communities to get to West High School. Then there's also residents that would like to preserve parking there. And so, that's a very astute and pertinent question and observation. But that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to just kind of add one comment or kind of question, I guess, again, to throw it out along those lines in terms of, you know, what are the goals? And I think that certainly is a question that perhaps is unanswered. But, you know, one of the questions is, should some of these on-street parking areas where there is heavy commuter impact often to access transit? Where folks are driving in from all-lining areas where there isn't great access or frequent enough access to transit and they're driving partway in where it's heavily served? And using those neighborhoods to then make that second leg of their trip to work, you know, via transit? And from, you know, inequity standpoint, is that a, is that a good thing or, you know, a bad thing? Should we be trying to prohibit that type of use or encourage it in some methods? And just adding to kind of that RPO item, this is a thought that does need, you know, further legal research and others. But one of the things we've discussed is, would it be possible in certain areas to create a sort of a TPO or be a permit parking only, where we might be able to designate different types of permits or eligibility for permits, but where all users would be required to have a permit? So just throwing out that as more of a topic for the thoughts and comments as we discuss this.
Thank you, Sabrina. Baltazar did that answer or address everything you were concerned about for the moment?
Yeah, I think that's some, I mean, I would like to, you know, that to be one of the important questions. But it looks like if that's one of the things that we've been, that is being considered, I would push a little bit to be more clear as one of those questions. But thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Baltazar. Tom, I see you have your hand up. Why don't you go ahead? I'm Lynch.
I must not have unraised my.
Okay, you were next.
I will unraise it now.
All right, thanks. All right, Alder Foster, you're next in the queue. Go ahead.
Thanks. Just to respond, Sabrina, to your kind of last idea, I would love to continue exploring that idea. I mean, one of the goals that I'd like to have as part of our overall parking strategy is to appropriately charge for this resource. And I think, you know, I understand sort of why our current system has developed. But I mean, I think also to kind of Baltazar's point, you know, if you're, let's say you're a homeowner in a downtown, you know, neighborhood and you get basically subsidized, you know, not free, but almost free parking access in addition to living in a place where you probably have really great transportation options, you know, walkable, bikeable, transit accessible. So you sort of have the best of all worlds and can have, you know, multiple cars that you're able to park on public property at a subsidized and privileged rate and priority. And then folks without all of those resources who, you know, maybe aren't on a bus line and are further out than can bike into their job downtown, you know, they're driving down and, you know, they don't even have that opportunity to use it. So it just doesn't, it seems like it's set up in a way that would have some negative impacts. And I like the idea of saying, you know, if that's the right option for folks, you know, they can get a park, they can pay for structured parking in one of our lots. You know, plugging a meter all day is not a very great option if you're working. But, you know, why don't we, why don't we rent out our on-street parking in high-demand areas for folks that need it? And I think what we could also see is a lot of residents, whether they're renters or owners, taking more advantage of the off-street parking capacity that exists because in a lot of neighborhoods, you know, it's just more convenient for people or they like, they don't want other people parking in front of their house. So they put their cars preferentially out on the street and leave their driveway open. And so, you know, I think one of the goals I'd like to get towards is pricing parking appropriately and not overwhelmingly prioritizing residential parking over other people's needs related to parking.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Chris McHale, you're up next.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on the discussion about the goals of the program. And I think to Alder Foster's earlier point about there's an idea that this is supposed to help reinforce reducing VMT, but does it do that? I think directly, it may not. But really, what's going on here is that the correctly designed program is going to, without the right residential parking, without the right on-street parking management program in place, the TDM program is going to stumble. And a lot of good projects are going to die because of opposition that they're facing over on-street parking. So I think inadvertently, that's all wrapped up in this. And so I think just being more clear about the role that managing on-street parking plays in these bigger goals will be important and that those connections are there, so you need to pin those down. And then I think the right program comes out of that. And to one of your questions about, does this need to be like area-wide instead of block-by-block? I think as a member of the Transportation Commission who sees these come through, the answer is definitely yes. You know, it is a whack-a-mole thing and these things are related. So pinning down the real purpose of this program, I think will necessarily lead to some area-wide parking management program. So that might be some new form of program or it could be that we sort of create a patchwork of RPOs and RP3s across an area or something. So that's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Further questions, discussion, or feedback on the questions presented? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Sabrina. We'll then move on to our next item. Legisstar 61900, Key Points in the Bus Rapid Transit Submittal Application to Small Starts Program.
Evening. So I have a presentation. I'm going to attempt to share my screen. All right, can you all see that?
Yep, yes.
Great. So I'm going to step through the application for the Small Starts Program to the Federal Transit Administration, the BRT project. That application went in last week, late last week. And then there'll actually be a separate presentation after this where Mike will step through some additional changes that we're looking at going forward. But this is really focused on what the application was that went in. So first little background, the Small Starts Program is intended to fund projects under roughly $250 million. So there is a separate program called New Starts that funds the larger light rail projects that are typically in the billions. But Small Starts programs are largely intended for these, still not small, but in the small, in the 100 to 200 million range. And the way that the scoring works is in, it's half and half in a project justification and then a local financial commitment. So the project justification is really revolving around the merits of the project itself. That, you know, how many people will use it? How cost-effective is it? How a lot of impact traffic, things like that. Whereas the local financial commitment is really around, how much money are you asking for and how much local money are you able to commit? So it seems a bit counterintuitive that the merits of the project are really only worth half the score. But that really reflects that the FTA is trying to, you know, bring as much other resources to the table to match their money. And so, that manifests itself in being half of the score. Each of these categories is rated on a high-to-low scale that's shown there on the left. And then, and you have to score at least a medium on both of these. So the way that this project was envisioned in last year's capital improvement plan had the BRT project at $128 million with a $96 million federal share. That meant that we were asking for about 75% from the Small Starts program and we were contributing 25% from other sources. Meanwhile, we had, there are two other projects that are very intertwined with the BRT that were listed as separate projects in the last capital improvement plan. That's the maintenance facility enhancement planned, currently planned for the Oscar Mayer site, but is, you know, generically for a satellite facility, as well as our bus replacements. And so, we have, in this version that we applied for to the FTA, we've actually combined the maintenance facility costs as well as the bus replacement. Bringing those into the BRT project budget allowed us to make things a lot more competitive around how we score on that financial commitment side. So by doing this, we were able to reduce our Small Start share that we're asking for by, down to 50%, down from 75%. And that really influences that score because the FTA views anything 50% or less, they give an automatic bump up in your rating. And I think I've actually got a slide here in a minute. But I'll touch on the overall project costs. When we combine those three projects, it has come down to, down by $16 million. And our local borrowing that we need, down by $15 million. The reduction in the overall project cost is related to two different things. One, we were able to realize some efficiencies in the Oscar Mayer or the satellite facility design that we think result in some cost savings there. And the other is in the bus replacement. So the previous plan had all of the BRT buses being purchased on top of all of our existing local fleet purchases being made. We've kind of redone the service plan, which I'll talk about here in a minute, to where, you know, the BRT is not just being layered on top of the existing system. It's being really integrated into the system. And that way, it's actually replacing some of the buses that we need, some of the other regular local buses we need. And so, we were able to reduce some duplication there and reduce the overall project cost. But the big deal is that we're reducing local borrowing by $15 million. And that is really a factor of being able to combine these projects together and bring with them the funding that was already allocated to them. We were able to leverage additional federal money. So basically, we were able to combine our 50% Small Start share with another 15% or so of federal formula funds that we get on a regular basis that were previously allocated directly to the bus replacements as well as the, some new federal money that came in for the, some BRT improvements in the form of a bus and bus facilities grant that was just announced here about a month ago. So all of this adds up to a reduction in local borrowing of $15 million plus a significantly greater chance of being funded by the FTA because we have reduced that federal Small Start share down to 50%. So one of the things that we had to make sure we were very clear about is how the service plan necessitates that many buses as part of the BRT. So our BRT project will score very highly on that first category, the project justification, just because of the sheer number of people that use the system through the campus area and downtown as well as through the city as a whole. But we really need to show how the system could really integrate into the overall local network and how those buses are really necessary to operate the BRT system. And so, what we proposed here is really three distinct service patterns that would make up the BRT service as a whole. So BRTA here in the blue line is really the, kind of the BRT as it's been known in the past. past. That service would get all of the infrastructure upgrades and it would have a bus running every 15 minutes. However, a bus running, a bus running every 15 minutes through the core of the city just isn't enough. That we would be carrying far too many people that would be able to fit in a bus every 15 minutes. And so we knew that we had to introduce some additional service in the core area. And so we've introduced two additional service patterns, one shown here, the BRTB is the yellow line. That would basically be running from the square out to Whitney Way as a BRT line, but then would continue out into Middleton just as a local service. So it would basically fill in the purpose of their local network without any additional infrastructure being built out there. Similarly, the BRTC line would run from between the north and south transfer points and overlap with the kind of core BRT line from Park Street to First Street. And this would have the makings of our future north-south line, but again, would not have any infrastructure built outside of the blue corridor here. As far as the types of buses, the BRTA would be electric, as has always been planned. The BRTC would also be electric. However, we would not be building any charging infrastructure at the north and south transfer points, so we would actually be ordering more buses than we would need in service at any given time. So that in the middle of the day, those electric buses, think of it kind of like a hockey game with a shift change where half the buses go into the garage to charge and another group of buses come out in the early afternoon to take over the route. That allows us to not have to build any charging infrastructure right now, but more importantly, it gives us the number of buses we need to extend the line at some point in the future when we do decide to build infrastructure. So then in the future, we would just build a charging site at the end of the line, at the new end-of-the-line location, and all of those buses would be on the road at once, running to the new endpoints, rather than coming home in the middle of the day and running for half the distance. And the BRTB is planned to be diesel buses. That's because some of the service in Middleton is a bit circuitous and there would not be a good opportunity for a, an end-of-line charging location there. But also, it's to give us a bit of flexibility. You know, I built an electric BRT line. There are a lot of challenges with those. I think we can appropriately mitigate those, but I think that there is some value in having at least a portion of our BRT fleet be diesel so that we have some flexibility. If there were a major power outage, if there were, you know, other major disruptions, we would still have the ability to provide some version of service. So this is really a chart showing the service frequencies. So as you can see, the BRTA and BRTB, or BRTA and C lines, so those green and blue lines, would be every 15 minutes for most of the day. And the BRTB lines, the yellow lines, would come in with additional service kind of in the AM to PM peak range, but would drop off largely over the weekends and in the late evenings, much the way that the current Middleton service does. We think this really rightsizes the amount of service for the demand that we'll see. But the nice thing is, is that we will have some additional flexibility with those diesel buses to deploy service, additional service if and when it's needed. So going back to this scoring criteria, we anticipate an overall medium-high rating for the project, which will consist of a medium on that project justification. Frankly, it's extremely difficult to get anything over a medium on that scale unless you are a major metropolitan area who will have, you know, tens of thousands of riders a day. We believe will be in the, more in the 15,000 range. But unless you expect 25,000 to 30,000 a day, it's really hard to get anything over a medium. And then again, because we've lowered our request to 50% on the local financial commitment, we'd get a medium-high there, and the two of those would average out to be a medium-high on the overall rating. And then Mike's going to talk a little bit more about the running ways and some of the things we're looking at, but everything that we have applied for right now conforms to the locally preferred alternative report that was adopted by council earlier this And then so a little on the timeline. So what we just submitted last week was technically not an application, but a request for rating and evaluation. So next spring, there'll be a report that comes out from FTA that would rate each of the projects that have been, that have submitted these requests. Again, we anticipate getting that medium-high rating. In the past, under previous administrations, that was just a rating and that was, well, I'm sorry, under previous administrations to this current one, that rating also included a recommendation for funding. So basically, they would allocate a certain dollar amount to each of those projects. And so the project sponsors were, had some level of commitment that that funding would be there when they were ready to accept it. The current administration has not done that. They have provided just ratings. So they've rated projects as medium-high or high or medium, but they have not recommended any of them for funding. And so that the way that they have funded projects is that for those projects that are willing to spend all local dollars to get to the end of their design process and essentially be shovel-ready, without any sort of commitment of funding, they fund those projects then at the end, once they've actually become shovel-ready. What that means is that, you know, some cities and some agencies have not really had the stomach for pursuing projects all the way through design, which may be, you know, $15 million before they have any sort of commitment of funding. Nobody knows what's going to happen next year, you know, if we have a different president or not, and how that they would pursue this next year. I would add that this year, the current administration changed their track a little bit and earlier in the summer did, by tweet, commit funding recommendations to a variety of projects, most of which were in purple states. So it will be including one in Milwaukee. So we don't really know how that'll work going forward, but it's a bit of an unknown at this point. But regardless, our hope is that by the end of 2021, we have kind of everything that's necessary to move forward with a project agreement, to actually commit those funds to Madison. And what that means is we need about 60% design plans, our environmental studies complete, and any other third-party agreements, you know, including with WISDOT and others whose, you know, land or right-of-way we need approval from. And then that would have us going to a, hopefully by the summer of '22, having a project agreement with FTA. So basically, those funds are committed and ready to use for us. And then we would go straight to a bid process from there with the start of construction in early '23. That is everything I have, unless there's any questions.
So we do have one registered for public comment on this item. It looks like Bob Schaefer is still with us. So it's 6 Cottonwood Circle, Madison. Bob, are you still here?
I am still here.
Okay, you have three minutes. You may go ahead.
First of all, that, thank you for the presentation. That in the, in your chart, there you list the FTA Small Starts Evaluation Criteria and the Automatic Medium because of existing high ridership. When I looked at the ridership for Madison Metro, that in the last few years, that ridership has been declining, the population has been increasing. I don't know how you justify that because saying high ridership. When I looked at the, the boardings based on the previous calculations for what bus stops to use, that the total east, central, and west boardings amounted to 11,029 boardings, daily boardings. And that these boarding stops did not take into consideration the fact that there are many other bus routes that stopped at those locations and those boardings would also have been included in it. Last year, when, at the West meeting, that the daily boardings were calculated to be about 10,000 boardings, up to 15,000 boardings. Much of my concern has been that in all of the documentation that's been produced, there's been no data that's been demonstrated on how those numbers are arrived at, that I've seen. And I've scrutinized them quite thoroughly. So that I don't know whether some of these figures are, have any merit because there's no data that documented.
Sorry, should I? Right, thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Are there any questions? If a board member has questions for the speaker, they can ask. Otherwise, if a board member would like to bring up a question during the questions portion, we'll do that. Okay, questions for staff? Alder Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just invite Justin if he had a response to the testimony.
Sure. So there, we do have passenger counters on most of our buses that count where people board the bus. Through a combination of those actual counts, some manual counts, as well as some statistical inference, we do have a map of where people board the bus and how many boardings there are in each location. There is a process, a very prescribed process that the FTA has for what they call warrants. And basically, they, any project up to 250 million, I believe, it's in the 200 million range, that has boardings per day of over 12,000 automatically qualifies for this medium rating. And our analysis, which has been reviewed and confirmed by the FTA, is that we have about 13,500 or so boardings in this corridor. And so we are comfortably over that 12,000 ridership per day limit.
Thank you, Justin. Alder Foster, did that?
That was great, thank you.
Answered the question for you? Okay, thank you. All right, then, hold on a moment. All right, questions for staff? Any comments? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Justin. So, no, hold on a moment. All right, we'll move on to our final item for the evening then, or at least the final large item for the evening, which is refinements being considered to the Bus Rapid Transit Locally Preferred Alternative.
Thank you. I'm Mike Chekvala, City Transportation Department. I'm going to try to share my screen here, so bear with me. Can't see the slideshow, let me know. So the Transportation Policy and Planning Board and City Council approved the LPA earlier this year in locally preferred alternative, which is basically the route, stations, and general characteristics of the BRT project. And so as we've been going through refining, planning, doing more planning, cost estimating, and generally, you know, thinking about things and evaluating different little components, we've sort of piled up a handful of revisions and we thought we'd bring them to you at this stage because at some point, we'll most likely be bringing them to you to approve. So I'm just going to kind of go through them. And again, these are kind of in draft form, but we wanted to get them to you earlier. So this is basically the LPA that was adopted. The red lines are bus lanes. The green lines are mixed traffic and the yellow was bus-on-shoulder on the campus drive section. And so this is, this is, this is a potential revised LPA. And so I'm going to go through some of the changes here. We have a handful of revised stations and then some runningways changes. I'm going to go through the stations at the end, so just bear with me. Okay. So since the LPA adoption, ongoing planning, perimeter and design, COVID-19, we have new Metro General Manager. And like I said, some of this has been kind of, kind of in the works for a while. So revised operating plan, which Justin talked about, center running versus side running, Rosa Road, Rose Road extension, Midota Street cutoff, revised East Terminal, revised station locations and capital costs. There's a lot here. I want to go through it kind of quickly, but I'll be available for questions and we can talk about pieces or as much as you want or as little as you want. The median running option or the center running option was dismissed earlier in the project. We had looked at kind of a range of runningway improvements and we had kind of put this off to the side because of traffic impacts on University Avenue particularly and other places since the COVID-19 pandemic and potential financial benefits of doing this. We've, we've kind of put it back on the table. I'll talk about that a little bit more, but these were kinds of the segments where we have identified that could be center running in kind of system-wide. East Washington, potentially University, potentially Mineral Point Road. I think Whitney Way is also potential on there. And then even looking at the future north-south line, Park Street, and I think either Sherman or Packers could be center running. So we've just kind of, we're just kind of looking at this again, kind of revisiting that decision. There are pros and cons. So Mineral Point Road, if we went with a median running cross-section, this is kind of what we do. We'd convert the inside median lane to bus only and the outside bus-bike and right-turn lane would be converted over to general-purpose traffic. So, you know, the benefit of this is we have stations in the middle, which are, instead of, we kind of have one big station in the middle rather than two smaller stations on the outside, which is a little bit more rapid transit-like. We also eliminate some of the conflicts with right turns, bikes, and, you know, legally parked cars, delivery vehicles, that kind of thing. So it does have some speed reliability benefits and it also sort of looks a little bit cleaner and more premium feel. On Mineral Point, we would likely lose the bike facility. We looked at kind of the widths, unless we could get something in somehow, without taking right-of-way or something, there isn't enough room on the street to say add bike University Avenue, similar, we had kind of looked at both side-running and median-running bus lanes. And I think Justin has been a little closer to this issue, so maybe I'll just turn it over, see if he has comments.
Yeah, so we explored, and I think this came up at one of the previous meetings of this body, we had explored a center-running alternative on University Avenue. I think the biggest challenge is that there's a, it's really hard to do center-running without dedicated lanes. And so we did have some initial discussions with Alders and Alder Furman was involved in that as well. And the feedback was quite negative around what the impact, the traffic diversion would be through those neighborhoods. And so at this point, you know, we're not really heavily pursuing that in the University Avenue section. So I think it's our intent at this point to stick with curbside lanes. So I think it's our intent at this point to stick with curb side lanes here.
Okay, then, East Washington Avenue is kind of broken up into a couple segments. This is the first segment through the Isthmus from kind of, I'm gonna, it shows Blanc, but really from Webster or Blair, all the way down to about the Ahara River. What we would do if we did median bus lanes here is, you know, again, convert the middle lanes to bus only, and then during peak times only, looking at eliminating parking in the bike facility, and then opening up that curb lane to general traffic to maintain the three lanes each way of capacity. But then off-peak, looking at, you know, maintaining the parking in the bike facility. You know, again, we're just kind of exploring these concepts. One thing I should mention too is that the left turns may be restricted at some of the stations. Otherwise, normally what would happen is the left turns would sort of merge through the bus lane. That's not very typical. Usually, you sort of protect the left turns with, with a protected signal phase. But this is a concept we're looking at, because it's simpler and easier, and it also, with the limited space that we have on these corridors, I think it makes sense. And then, you know, again, the, the impact here is that we'll, we need to know what kind of buses to purchase. If we're planning on having median stations that rely on buses with left-side doors, we would need buses with left-side doors. First Street to Milwaukee is sort of a transitional segment. It's a more residential area. So again, we would, if we continued through farther out, we would do the same basic cross-section, bus lanes in the middle, and then peak periods converting the parking and bike facility into a, into a travel lane. It's just a little bit of a different segment because of the residential neighborhood, you know, again, thinking about residential parking needs and so forth. And then going farther out, past Milwaukee Street, we lose that continuous parking and bike lane. And so if we wanted to go farther out between Milwaukee and Wright, we would then have to do a full-time capacity reduction. On the westbound side, we do have an auxiliary lane that kind of opens up in between about Oak Street and Milwaukee Street. So we would get some additional capacity there. Another issue here is that the WISDOT does have some jurisdiction, and so we would need to work cooperatively with them to, you know, have an agreeable cross-section. The other option, if we, if we didn't get it east of, say, First Street or Fourth Street, we would likely need to transition over to the curb side, to the side-running side, and be a mixed traffic or in a bus lane on the curb lane, or some combination. And that's sort of awkward. It's doable, but it's a little awkward. But it's doable.
Mike, could I make one quick, one quick comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
So just so everybody's aware, I mean, part of the reason why we're looking at this is because I brought this to the team, and we did a lot of this in Indianapolis. And really, the justification for it, Mike mentioned the, the, some of the loading issues that happened along the curbside with loading trucks and things parking in the lane, as well as it's quite a bit cheaper to have a station, a single station in the middle, rather than two separate stations on the sides. And it just, it operates a little bit better. And plus, there's some benefits to reduced right-of-way and utility conflicts as well. So that's kind of the rundown of why we're looking at this.
Yeah, and again, you know, this isn't, this isn't new. We've been looking at it for a long time. We kind of, we kind of shoved it off to the side, you know, mainly because of the capacity issues and the impacts of other, other modes. And, you know, COVID kind of changed, changed the landscape, and we, various input and other things we've got. So we're just, we're just taking a look at it again. Okay, so transitioning here, so this is what we had, we had recommended on the west side. We had looked at four alternatives in this area. And this is what we kind of came up with. It's going down Whitney Way to serve the West Transfer Point, and coming back up to Mineral Point, continuing down to the west side. The goal was to serve the West Transfer Point as well as the, the node of activity where we're having some major development at Tokay and Whitney Way, and indirectly serve the tens of thousands of people that live southwest of their, south of the Belt Line. And then our intention was, was kind of to revisit, to have this as a kind of an option and revisit with the Route Network Study. If they wanted to keep it, they could keep it. If we wanted to, if we decided that the West Transfer Point wasn't needed or wasn't desired, then we could kind of lop that, that deviation off. What we found was that the cost of that one block of Rose Road was about $5 to $7 million. It's mainly due to the stormwater impacts. As right-of-way for the road is involved, right-of-way for the stormwater. We talked with our coworkers in engineering, and they sort of agreed with the assessment. You know, there is some contingency built into that number, but, but it's, we sort of started asking ourselves, can we justify that kind of cost for one block of road? You know, and then it's, it'd be useful, I think, for the street grid as well to have that connectivity, but, you know, so, so we're starting to kind of reconsider that. And I'm gonna kind of show you what we're, what we're thinking of instead. And I think our goal here was to leave the option open to use the West Transfer Point if, if the Route Network Study says they need it. The other goal is sort of strategic in that we want to kind of keep the costs identified with the West Transfer Point and the stations and all that other, all that other stuff in the cost estimate in the project, with the intent being that it's easier to remove things than to add costs in. And so this, this is kind of the alternative if Rose Road sort of isn't available. We looked at other routes, which look even worse, to be honest, but, you know, it's like, you know, this is sort of the, this is sort of the way to do that if Rose Road Extension doesn't exist. And, you know, I'll be pretty straightforward. It's not a, it's not a good-looking route. I mean, it's, we generally try to have, have BRT routes and in general transit routes be more straight lines than squiggles. We'd have potentially stations where, you know, people can get on the bus going in both directions, and so there'd be some confusion and misdirection and, and things like that. I, I think it's, the goal is to kind of take Rose Road out of it, but still leave the, leave the option in to serve the West Transfer Point. And I, I don't know, draw your own conclusions, but I think, you know, with the Route Network Study, I think, I think there's, there's merit in, or there's, there's value in looking at ways to, you know, remove, remove that and save five minutes. I think we'll be talking about this in pretty great depth with the Route Network Study. But I think strategically, this is, this is the way to, to sort of, you know, take, take out the Rose Road Extension and sort of move along, move the project forward without it. And so I think that's, that's the goal. If Justin or Tom have any thoughts on that, you know, they can chime in, but I think those are kind of my thoughts on it. Okay, so moving forward, this is what we've, we've always, we've called this the Mendota Street cutoff. And if you look at the, so this is on East Wash by Stoughton Road, as the map implies. The way Route 6, which is the East Washington service currently goes through here is the black dotted line. It goes up Wright Street, Kinsman, and kind of curls around. It's very circuitous, but that's how it does it. We shaved a couple minutes off of Route 6 by just dropping it down to Anderson Street. But then we were always kind of vague as to how it got from Anderson Street back to East Wash to continue out towards the mall. We would use either the blue dotted line on Stoughton Road or the blue solid line on Mendota Street. And so we would like to kind of pursue the Mendota Street route, which we, we've been calling, again, the Mendota Street cutoff. It does include a new bus-bike-only connection just east of Stoughton Road. Right now, that's a head bike, shared-use path, small connection. The right-of-way is actually there. It, it would, it would place bus traffic on a, on a local residential street, which now clearly doesn't have bus traffic. We wouldn't have any stations there. The stations would all be basically in the same places. It's just the question of how we get from the Anderson Street Station to the Mendota Street Station on East Wash. A cutoff is a railroad term. It's, it's when they replace an old windy, circuitous route built in the 1800s with a, with a more modern straight route, usually by, you know, cutstills, tunnels, and other things. That's kind of where the name came from. Reduces travel time by a couple minutes. The other thing that I think is really valuable to it is it eliminates a lot of the reliability problems with that highly congested intersection. We don't control the signals or state WISDOT signals. You know, it's, it's a highly congested eight-phase signal. We pretty much just sit through it. And then as, if you're, if you've been out there, I don't know, just through the years, you know, it just, it just seems like there's, there's reliability concern with, with crashes, and if there is congestion, that's where it hits. And then the other issue is at some point, WISDOT will decide to rebuild, reconstruct that, that intersection, probably with an interchange. And so avoiding that section would, would sort of shield us from many of those impacts, although it would be temporary. You know, I think it's a little bit awkward to have our new BRT lines sort of be on detour for an extended period right of way. The LPA report was kind of silent on which, which route, again, because of the, the stations aren't really affected. We just kind of drew a fuzzy line in that, that area. But we'd like to kind of pursue it. We've, we've made contact with the Alder, who seems supportive. And going up the road, up the line just a little bit, here's the adopted East Terminal. It basically went out and stopped at our existing transit center in the East Town parking lot. And that was just kind of a default option that we showed. We have a, we have the existing transit facility there. We have a handful of routes that meet, that come together there. It was kind of, kind of just, well, this would be the, sort of the easiest, more straightforward thing that we could do without thinking about it too hard. And, and so now we've kind of gone through and started, started thinking about it a little bit more. There are some, some, some issues with it. The station routing and charging would all be on private property. That gets awkward for us as a city, as well as our agreements with the, with the feds. You know, they like to see those agreements in place. And so if everything's on public right-of-way that we control, it's a lot easier. Risk that the area could be redeveloped with modified street network. Retail areas east of the terminal unserved. Residential areas north of East Wash unserved. Slow and unreliable operations on East Town Boulevard. So we looked at a, a bunch of different options up here, and this is sort of what we came up with. The idea is we would stay on East Wash. We would serve, the Portage Theer Station is the same. That's not, that's unchanged. But then we would serve a new station at Independence, which is the only unsignaled intersection in that area. We would put a signal in, and then we'd have a station up at East Springs. And East Springs is where we would, we would stop and lay over and charge. And so I think this is actually, it seems like a very simplistic thing, but I think it's actually quite elegant. If you look at the mall area, the mall, the mall area, you know, in the future, if it's replaced with something or rethought or done differently, either way, it all kind of, kind of drains up and feeds into the Independence Station. And then there are, there are two residential areas, north of East Wash. One is up by Melody Lane up there, and they, well, the whole area is residential, but that's, that's a multi-family denser area, some low income. And they, they kind of feed right down into the Independence. And then my thought too is that if we did put a signal there, we don't have any north-south crossing traffic allowed currently. So if we did put a signal there, I think potentially, we could make it a much nicer crossing than any of the other signals there, because we don't have all the conflicting left turns and so forth. So I think we could have wider median with, you know, like I said, fewer conflicting left turn movements. I think it would be a, be a nice, much nice crossing for the neighborhood. And then if you look at the East Springs Station, the retail area past the mall, past Zaire, the Kohl's, and the Home Depot, and the Best Buy, or, you know, if, if that area evolves, whatever replaces it, that all kind of funnels into the East Springs Station. And the East Springs is kind of as far as you can go before you basically become a freeway. And even, you know, that station there, although it is quite sort of freeway-ish, there's, there's quite a bit of right-of-way, right-of-way there available to us. There is a sidewalk network, so I think it would, I think it would be okay. There is some coffee, bagel, there's a Panera Bread, there's a handful of other things there. The drivers could get lunch, as well as, you know, I just think amenities like that at the end of the line are nice to have for, for both drivers and passengers. And then the last thing I want to mention is the residential multi-family area up in the, up by Forest Run, up at, on Hayes there, kind of to the top right of the picture. They now can funnel down, and I think it's a little bit more than a quarter-mile walk, but it's, it's definitely a reasonable walk. You know, if you lived up there, and your option was to take, you know, a circulator hourly bus route or something, or walk, you know, three-eighths or half of a mile to reach a BRT station. I think a lot of the people who are able would use the option of walking or biking. It's a very reasonable walk. We have, you know, we know that people are walking down to catch buses from there, because we can see the, and go wherever people go, because of the, you know, the trails that they make and the grass and so forth. So I think that's a, that's a big amenity for the, for the residential side on the north side. And actually, if you look at the way the BRT line looks on the west side, it's pretty much identical. On the west side, we kind of had the option of snaking into the mall and kind of going around like the 67 does, and, or just staying on Mineral Point and serving the mall on the south side and the residential on the north side. And we decided to just stay on Mineral Point and kind of serve both sides. And so we're kind of doing the same thing here. Revised station locations, I'm gonna just go to the map. On the west side, Yellowstone was, we were looking at splitting that into two, Grand Canyon and Island. You know, part of that, part of this was, you know, we kind of started with a lot of stations, and then we decided that, you know, there's a lot of stations, and we looked to try to kind of thin them out where we could improve travel times. And, you know, we kind of go back and forth to kind of reach an equilibrium. But, so that, that would be split into two. At Whitney Way and Sheboygan, this is actually the way we had it a long time ago, or not even that long ago. And we kind of just needed to make a decision to move things through the process. And so we, again, with that effort of consolidation, we consolidated one to Whitney and Sheboygan. Looking at that, I think it's definitely better to keep it the way we originally had it at Whitney and Regent, and then Sheboygan and Eau Claire. That's a much better station spacing. And then the Eau Claire Station really is central to that neighborhood, so that, I think that's a better spot for that station. And then looking at the near, the, the near Isthmus. And then looking at the near, the, the near Ismas area, there's another consolidation. I know we, we talked a lot about the station spacing around the Capitol Square. And I kind of, kind of hinted that if I was going to get rid of any of them, my preference would be the Webster Street Station. And so I, that's what we're going to kind of suggest is moving, moving Webster to Blair and then moving, moving Livingston to Patterson. And that gives us, gives us a little bit more uniform station spacing. I think the Webster Station would have made sense for a lot of people. We have the Jeff Buildings there. And, you know, as downtown, a lot of people are using the stations. Eastbound, we'd be essentially closing two, two stops in a row. So we'll probably get some complaints about that. There is some reasons we had the Webster Station in, but I think from a, a station spacing perspective, I think it makes sense. So we'll, we'll try it and, and, and see what you think and, and, and see what the public thinks at our, at our next meetings. If, if that's the, the will of, of, of the policymakers. And then I think the only other stations were, were the, at the east end, which I already talked about, so I'm not going to talk about that again. So I'm just going to leave, leave this up and see if there's any questions.
So Tom Lynch, did you want to add anything? See if your hand up.
Yeah. Yes, about 20 minutes I did. Sorry. Mike, you're so long-winded.
Oh, sorry, Tom. I didn't know you.
So I just wanted to say, just regarding the West Transfer Point. That will be clarified with our route study. Right now, we still feel like it's important to touch the transfer point because it provides access to the BRT for the southwest portion of Madison. And right now, that, that seems like that, that has an importance, but we're going to kind of let the route study do that. So right now, the main decision is that we just feel like the Rosa Road extension with literally 900 feet. Costing five to seven million dollars. We just don't feel like that's perhaps the best use of, of the monies that we're, we're stewards of. And that's why we're reconsidering that. So that's all I really had to say. Thanks.
All right. Thanks, Tom. So we had two registrants. We had a Chelsea, Pastana, 5760 Highland Way in Middleton, neither in support nor opposition and not wishing to speak. So I'm not sure what to take from that, but we, and then we have Bob Schaefer. So Bob, if you're still with us, you've got three minutes and you can begin when you're ready. If I can get you unmuted here.
Okay. This is the first time I've seen this and I've gone to all the meetings and, and I'm disappointed that there were no public meetings in making these decisions. That, my understanding is that along East Washington and throughout the rest of the corridor, that you'd probably still have local buses. As I pointed out to you before, that if those local buses are going to be using the same lanes, that you're going to have to stop behind them. The other thing with the street running, if you're going to have local buses in that same lane, that local buses are not able to load from the side. The other disadvantage or the other real safety problem with having center running buses on East Washington is that people need to get there somehow or other. And the only way they're going to be able to get there is to cross all the traffic. The only place that they're going to be able to cross the traffic is at intersections. And what that's going to require is at intersections, you're going to have to have a time for all traffic to stop so that no turning traffic can get in the way of people trying to cross the intersection to get to the bus stations. The other problem is that you have mobility challenged people, wheelchair people. And if you're going to have a large number of people going across the street, you're going to have to have additional walk time. So I don't think that this is a really well thought out process. And a comment about the East Springs, there is left turning traffic across East Town going to, across East Springs or going on to East Springs from the westbound side. And so I, I just think that this hasn't, as, when I first saw this, I thought, huh, they're trying to do it so that you meet the FTA requirements for BRT and that's to be center running. I, I think that this is a mistake. I don't think it was well thought out and I've seen a lot of safety concerns there. And I see a lot of people missing buses because they might get there, but the light's not right for them. Board and you're going to board people. Yeah, I just, I, I see a lot of different problems with it. And, and I, and I really think that some of this stuff is put in there just to get BRT because we want to get BRT and I don't see a value to it. Most of the people that I talked to are not impressed with BRT. And, and as far as the west link, that when I studied the boardings on there, that you have more boardings possible at the west transfer point than you do at West Town. Or any boardings at West Town. So I, I just think that you are dealing with problems. The other thing that you do is if you're having lanes, driving lanes on the outside of there, that it totally takes away the opportunity for bike trends, bike movement there.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Questions for the speaker? Chris, go ahead.
Thanks. I think I'll just give you some feedback, I think, and throw a question in there. But I, I think it's great that, it's, it's good to see that we're still, we haven't just paused for a moment with the, the preferred alternative. And we're, we're rethinking some of these details. When we, we talked a lot about the West Transfer Point and, you know, how solid was that plan at the time? And we agreed we had to move forward with something. It's good to see that there are some other options coming out. And I think that, that those choices will come out in the route study and, and the, the planning process for this, for this BRT. So just commend you on that. Thanks.
Chris, just, is this a question for Mr. Schaefer, the speaker, or for staff?
Oh, sorry. No, sorry.
Okay. All right.
If anybody else has a question for, for Mr. Schaefer.
Yeah, seeing, seeing none, you, you can continue. I just wanted to make sure that we were on the same. Okay, go ahead.
Yep. Actually, since you bring that up, this is the first time I think that we're really kind of looking at the east end a little more. And I kind of, the option of, of moving the east terminal to East Wash at first seemed kind of, I don't know, like it raised some questions because we don't really have a clean terminal sort of in what seems to be a developed area. But I'm sort of opening to this idea and, and to Mr. Schaefer's point, I think this is really going to be impetus to make sure that these connections along that corridor are really solid. So I think looking at the, the new signals and the crossings and the connections to and from East Wash are really going to be critical here. And I think that kind of brings us to light. Similarly, I like that we're looking at different options around Madison College. And I think that will also come out to the route study and just, we haven't looked at it closely. I'm, I'm, I've always been kind of wondering whether that Madison College connection will ultimately make sense through the course of the route study. Maybe that there might be a better way to serve the college than actually having the BRT make this, this sort of detour. But I like that we'll have some options on the table and we'll be able to sort of think about that through the route study. And finally, it's, I, I'm happy that we're looking at center boarding again. I think it's good that it's still on the table. And just a question on that. I know on East Wash, we're losing in terms of the bike lane stuff. I think that is something, that, that's a, a, a pretty significant downside to this option. I know in East Wash, it's like bike lane parking, but like on Mineral Point Road, we're really talking about the, the alternative being a shared bus and bike, right? That we'd be losing. So, yeah.
Tom, Tom, yeah, if you have feedback, go ahead.
Yeah. So we're in the process of actually writing a memo right now to understand what center running would do and how it would affect bikes. We intend to put this kind of through a public process this fall to get input. And then a situation where we can kind of address what are likely WISDA concerns, but also address what would be best for the BRT. I actually think on East Washington, there, there are several win-win options that we can address most of the concerns and perhaps also capture the advantages of center boarding or center running. And so Mineral Point, it's, it's fully under our jurisdiction, but I think the trade-offs are, just as you stated, Chris, that the cyclists will either be sharing a lane with a bus or they'll be in a general purpose lane. And that's, that's a hard decision to make. And so those are things that we have to consider.
Yep. So that's it. Sorry to sort of just run through a bunch, but I was just taking some notes and just wanted to share them out there. So thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Further questions for staff or comments? Alder Foster?
Thank you. Yeah, I would also am supportive of looking at the center running. So I think that's good that we're doing it. There's obviously some advantages there as well as some of the drawbacks that we've heard about. My, I guess question is around the West Transfer Point appendix. And, you know, very supportive of pulling the Rose of the Road component out. And I mean, I heard a few people kind of talk about this and it'll be dependent on the, the route study. But I guess my question is, I mean, it seems just so obvious that our future BRT route should not do that. And like, what's the advantage to not just pulling that out right now and saying, we will figure out what's going to happen with the route study in terms of how the rest of our transit system is going to connect into the West BRT line rather than having what is just really hard to imagine being the actual west route doing that?
Yeah. I mean, we're kind of, we've kind of been, been talking about this on and off for, you know, a couple of years. And there, you could definitely make that, that case. I think it's the whole southwest side basically funnels into the West Transfer Point because there are limited connections across the Beltline. Basically, all of the buses south of the Beltline end up coming up Whitney Way because Gammon is too far west to, we could have something coming up Gammon, but we really don't. Whitney Way is, is by far the most logical connection for them to come up. And so then, you know, you want your, you want your buses to generally come every half hour, every hour and make connections with other buses. A lot of bus systems work that way. And unless you're running, you know, 10 to 15 minute frequencies, you have to kind of pulse. And so then it becomes, if you're running hour and half hour loops out of the, the West Transfer Point, how far can you go? And so if you, if you pull the West Transfer Point up to Mineral Point Road, you add five minutes to all the routes. And then you're, you're either, you're either cutting a lot of service on the south side of Madison, or you're having awkward, you know, buses that come every 40 and 120 minute, 140 and 80 minutes or something, something like that. You know, or you're just having completely untimed connections. I think the other issue is, although we do have pretty good ridership on the corridor, the West Transfer Point, I think is kind of fundamental to, to bringing, all, all BRT and light rail systems basically rely on connections from other routes. So, you know, relying on the, so if the, if the BRT system didn't touch the West Transfer Point and didn't serve those connections, we'd have a lot of people that just stay on the local buses and wouldn't see a lot from the BRT line. And I think the ridership would really kind of, kind of fizzle out at the west side there. So to really maximize the use of the investment, we thought it was best to, to serve the West Transfer Point. You know, again, the route network study could change that. Our, our stance was always, well, we, we've, we've looked at different ways to sort of ease, quote unquote, easily make the connections. You know, for example, moving the West Transfer Point up to Mineral Point Road, that doesn't work for the reasons I stated. We looked at Odana Road, that was, didn't work because it's, it's, you know, it's just not a great BRT corridor. And so that was, you know, kind of the, the goal was to maintain those connections and the, the route. Have, have the BRT line be a, be a central component of the route network and not just a, not just a, you know, a bus route. For example, right now Route 14 is basically what serves that area. And it doesn't serve the West Transfer Point and it's, ridership is, is lower than, than it could be. And it doesn't have weekend service and things like that. And so the, the route that this is now kind of replacing is the two and the 67, which are both high ridership routes. And so we want to kind of pull people from that market and serve the, serve the connections. I, I mean, you know, clearly you can, you can pull this in different ways and, and make that, make that case. But I, I think the BRT system probably should be a, a central component of, of the route network. It, you know, it's, it's hard to draw, draw routes out, out of this area that, that makes sense. We're limited by the Beltline. I don't know. It's a, it's sort of a, it's sort of a, it's sort of a one minute answer that doesn't get there or it's a three hour answer. We're, we're open to input and we're going to explore the issue heavily with the, with the, with the network study.
Yeah, I mean, I, I get it. And I, I mean, if this route had to fit our system, I think that, I mean, I understand the argument. But I guess my assumption and understanding is that the goal of the, the network analysis is to really look at this de novo and it feels like our BRT route should be then the starting point for that. And we need to make the rest of it fit that. And like, I just cannot imagine us having our BRT route do this and having passengers sitting and going down to this thing and turning around and coming back in order to get further west. I, you know, it's just sort of hard to grasp. And so I'm, I mean, I, I appreciate that it sort of doesn't matter maybe how we have it sketched out now. That we'll have our final answer after that network analysis. But I guess I'm just surprised that we would even do this sort of a thing rather than just, you know, take this out now and on ourselves to fix this when we do that network analysis. And, you know, also we don't have anything like this for the East Transfer Point. I mean, there's not, you know, we're expecting that we're going to get everybody east and south and east of East Washington to connect to the BRT line in some way. We don't have some weird extension that goes down Milwaukee Street and turns around and runs back before going out to East Town. So, I mean, it looks like Tom's got something to input.
Yeah, Tom, go ahead and jump in if you want.
Yeah, I, I think we will evaluate it. This does provide some indirection. However, you know, our, our, the modeling suggests that we could get, you know, 2,400 riders here, which is much more than we'll get at, at West Town. And many of those riders will be from areas that might be communities of color. And so I think, I think the indirection and the concern regarding the indirection is warranted and it needs to be evaluated. But I, I think at this point, we, we don't want to necessarily take this out of the, the system without understanding the impacts to the, kind of our communities that live in southwest Madison. So I think your concerns, Alder Foster, are on the table, but I don't think, I would be very reluctant to just take out the West Transfer Point without further analysis and a lot more discussion with the community.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. Add to that, add to that, you know, our, like I said, kind of our goal with this was to react to Rose Day Road being potentially eliminated, to keep the costs that we had identified, keep it on the corridor, keep the costs identified for it on it because it's easier to take them off than, than, than put them on. And then also to give the route networks study at least the option. the option. But I know I you make good points, Alder Foster. I, this, this isn't a route that we normally try to design. I think it's sort of strategic at this point to basically, you know, let the let the network study have the option.
That's fine. I guess, you know, I also I like what was proposed with the additional, I forget if you think, kind of concept and with, you know, a split going off Middleton Ways. And, you know, if if there's such a strong need for a connection in this general area, then I mean, it almost makes more sense to be looking at something like that than where you have, you know, part of the buses going to West Town and part of them going south on Whitney Way, you know, perhaps even past the Belt Line or or something. But it just, I mean, to me, this did not look like one line that somebody would sit on and go through this and call it up here. So I mean, we'll have plenty of time to work on it. But it just, I think, leaving it in here like this just raises a lot of questions. And it's, it looks very strange, I guess, at this point.
All right. Thank you, Alder Foster. Go ahead, Alder Furman.
Thank you. I appreciate the update. And did want to just throw in a quick two cents about the west transfer point. I mean, I, I think we, you know, I think if we're hopefully, I hope that we're not in this position in 2023 when we're constructing it. But I think taking taking it out of the equation now, I think, is a mistake. I, you know, I don't, I don't love the way it looks. But I do think we we need to continue the eye on the goal of of servicing the people that that use the west transfer point. And I think if we we take that route off the table now, I think it makes it much easier to ignore it as we're looking at other things. So I think keeping that ugly route, you know, on the table and on the board with the reminder that everybody knows that we we think it's ugly and not a great idea. But but the idea of servicing the buses that go into the west transfer point is is our goal. And, you know, how do we move that? And what are some of the other ideas there? You know, we have, we have time to do that. And I'm glad that's part of what's being looked at with the route study. So I just want to kind of throw my two cents in there that, you know, ultimately, I'd like to see this look a lot nicer. But, you know, taking it off the board now, I think, would be a big mistake. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Furman. Are there any further comments, questions, or discussion? All right, seeing none. Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Tom. We'll then move on to the next item, which is we can finish up pretty quickly, I think. Future agenda items, I don't, I don't have a whole lot. I think we're gonna at some point be reviewing the parking again. I know there was interest in having some discussions around budgets for next year. And then it sounds like, you know, we'll be following up with the BRT and a few other things. Tom, is there anything that stands out for you that you know, or that you think will be on, I guess, our October 5 meeting?
Yes. There are two items before council tomorrow night, our complete streets study as well as our metro route network study. So after the approval tomorrow night, we can garner signatures. And so there will be items for the board to consider with both of those studies. And we were hoping very soon after the signature of the met route, metro route study, to have a consultant come in and provide kind of a background on how transit route cities are performed, the balancing of different alternatives. And so I think both the metro route study, as well as complete streets, will provide ample discussion items for the for the coming months.
Thanks, Tom. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, I think also at some point, whether it's October 5 or not, we should get an update on the Vision Zero kind of project planning. That one did get approved by council, but I think that should be something we're getting kind of regular updates on.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Chris McHale.
Thanks. It occurred to me partly through our conversation tonight and other stuff I've seen lately, that at some point, the board might be interested in getting some insight into how the city's thinking about traffic forecasts and future assumptions and maybe weighing in on some of that. Might be a little bit of time and wrapping your head around that. But I think that could be something at some point.
All right. Thanks, Chris. That was an excellent idea. Any further comments, questions, or discussion for this item? All right, seeing none. General announcements, I don't have many. Our next, our next meeting is on the 5th of October, as I mentioned earlier, our joint meeting of the TBBB and TC is going to be on the 30th. And then just an update on the transportation or traffic calming subcommittee, starting to get a little bit late or long of a meeting. We are meeting on the 10th and the 17th. And the our our goal is to hopefully come to the joint meeting with some early recommendations and a work plan to get some direction from both bodies while they're in the same room together. And then go from there. Any questions about that? I have nothing else for the evening. So last chance, comments, questions? All right, seeing none. That is all I have, all we have.
Move adjournment?
Motion, Alder Kimball, is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion, seeing none. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Chair believes it's unanimous. We are adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Thanks.